What does it come to when you have to push your own buttons? What if we come to?
Good evening, Littleton, and welcome to the March 25, 2024 Select Board Meeting. This evening, we will be starting off an executive session and return in approximately 15 minutes. We have the motions.
Move the Select Board vote to enter in Executive Session Number Two pursuant to measure along Chapter 38, Sections 21a2 to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel at the collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Fire Chief, Police, Fire Dispatch, Public Works, and Interfire Chief, the Select Board will adjourn to Executive Session and will reconvene in open session after the Executive Session.
Will call vote?
Second.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Moved by Mark, sent by Matthew. Will call vote Karen?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to aye as well. I will see you in about 15 minutes.
Hey, will you plug this in?
It's a very basic template.
Yeah.
That we can build upon, but.
Fantastic.
And that will be, you know, be on the website and you can turn the pages.
Okay, yeah, I was going to ask what the format would be. Is it, is it going to be Adobe or is it a different?
It's, I forget what, but it looks like you turn the page.
Yeah, yep.
And then we'll, but as I announced this morning at the Select Board, no, listen, I'm sorry, the Department meeting, that, you know, we need to be more vigilant moving forward with information and what's going on to keep everyone. Can I explain to you what's happening at Lynnfield? There was a huge problem and a survey was taken and the Select Board, in the town administration there, got eviscerated from lack of sharing information.
Right.
That's what we're trying to avoid here and so everyone was very supportive of the Department and being, being motivated to do it.
I hope that will, I mean, my, you know.
And we'll be on the road.
Sure.
We'll move, we'll walk before we can run.
Yeah, and we'll make, you know, think it'll evolve, I'm sure, but I also think maybe this will resolve.
All right. We will begin our, our meeting. We are going to be in a joint meeting this evening to kick off with the Finance Committee, but we'd like to start things off with the Budget Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
Right. No, absolutely, Michelle, go on.
Welcome, everybody. So we have a couple of full boards, which is nice.
We have a quarter, we are in second.
Right. I'm going to ask, before we get into the business, we're going to take a few seconds. I'll ask about the 10, 15-second pause just to reflect on a couple of local business icons that we lost in the last, since our last meeting. Gary Wilkins, senior from Gary's Farm Stand, you know, I took a snap of his, got his obituary and just took a little piece out of it, not just for his contributions to local agriculture, but for the warmth and kindness he extended to everyone he met. And that was a strong statement, and I think that anyone that ever met him can agree. That's how, how he made you feel. So, and our second gentleman was Mr. George Davis. For those who've been around a while, Little Peach, then Tedeschi's, what is it now?
Little's Inconvenience.
Little's Inconvenience. He owned that among, among other businesses that he had before that, but George made every day brighter for those lucky enough to cross his path with his ability to see the positive in any situation. So, two gentlemen that passed away over the last few weeks will be missed, and they were pillars in our community and good farmer, good business owner, and contributed a lot to our town's happiness and our greatness. So, we take about 10 seconds just to. Thank you. All right, on to town business. We're going to go over the, just going to read the mail, and then we'll get into our joint meeting with the Finance Committee, who will be reviewing the warrant for town meeting to try to vote to close the warrant this evening. We will adopt article recommendations and assignments of articles for the Select Board. We'll get into our member and public input. We will have our department updates from Human Resources. We have a reclassification coming in. We have a couple of appointments. Fire Department Deputy Chief will come in, will discuss his appointment and temporary promotion for a few months as we await our new Fire Chief. And Conservation, we will have a discussion on Tree City USA proclamation request for Arbor Day. And then Select Board discussions are Littleton Country Gardeners. We're talking about using Littleton Common. We will discuss Taylor Street Truck Exclusion and vote to authorize ARPA funding for sewer betterments. And we'll get into our minutes of January 24th and March 11th. So, without further ado, if you have anything, Mr. Town Minister?
For the, I will clarify that, with the mayor, we've got the current, our current openings, and we have one in the Clean Lakes Committee, one Economic Development Committee, Permanent Indivisible Building Committee has one availability, Sustainability Committee has one available for one member, Transportation Advisory Council has three alternate members or citizen at large. We have, if anyone out there would like to receive public notifications for Town of Littleton, please go to www.littletonma.org/subscribe, and you can be hooked into Community Impacts, Transportation Issues, Public Health Concerns, Public Safety Activity, Town Meetings, Town Events, to stay informed. We also have, we have a gift acceptance by the, by the Littleton Rotary Club to, as a donation to the U Scholarship Fund for $1,000 from, from the Rotary, and that was to Parks and Recreation Committee. We also have a gift from David in San Remo, Murray for $2,500 for the library, which was very, very generous with that $2,500. We also have an announcement from Kate Bonner about the updates of the Granite State event results, in which the updates from the Mechanical Advantage at the Granite State District Event last weekend for the, for the first competition of the 2024 season, the team in their worldwide presto ended one and a half days of qualification matches ranked number three at the event and was selected by the first seeded team for playoffs along with a team from Bristol, New Hampshire. And it went, the Alliance went undefeated through the double elimination bracket and they made it to the finals where they faced the second seeded Alliance. They were proud to take, at the end of it, take second place, and it was outstanding and very, very, very fantastic accomplishments by, by them. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on into our joint meeting. How will we review the warrant, approve order of articles, vote to insert articles, and vote to close the draft posting?
So, to the both chairs, I can begin to walk through this, your hard copies before you of our current draft warrant. So, I went through most of these articles with the Finance Committee last Tuesday, I believe it was, so there have been some other changes from that. Just so the Select Boards are aware, from the list that we sent out, anything that's in yellow are things that were added at the Select Board meeting, and things in blue are things that were added subsequent to that meeting. So, we'll talk about that once we, once we get to those items. Most of the items that aren't highlighted have already been recommended by the Select Board to add that, to add those articles to the May 7 warrant, but again, a few new items here as well. So, so if it's okay with both chairs, we'll go through everything that's okay with you. So, Article One is the acceptance of annual reports. Typically, that's what we hear from the Finance Committee. Steve tells me he's written War and Peace, six pages long from the, Steve, you're supposed to smile a little bit. Come on, let's just help me out a little bit here.
That's from the book, yes?
The book. Okay, okay. So, the Finance Committee's doing their update. I know, I know Karen, you mentioned Nagod maybe wanting to do an update as well.
We would, definitely. We definitely would.
Okay, okay. So, I think that, you know, if you could at least, you know, let me know, and then we can pass that along to the Town Moderator as to whomever might want to be providing updates at that time. We can, we can get that and also get your slides, your slide deck presumably with anything that you want to present, we can handle that as well. So, again, that's sort of a standard thing, so. And if anybody's watching, if they have any, if any other updates that aren't going to be coming along, like CPC, Carolyn, you've probably been writing a update during your article, so that's fine. Next up is bills of prior years. We do have one bill of prior years, which is from KP Law. This bill came in, came in late and we're asking the Board to pay it out of our Town Council legal fees, so that's Article Two. Article Three is our operating budget. We don't have the whole budget table here, but the total budget is now, the total recommended budget is $59,625,819 with $58,813 and 20, oh, I'm sorry, try that again, $58,813,276 to come from raising appropriate, or basically your taxes, and another $794,543 from the undesignated fund balance. So, for our next versions of the document, we basically have two weeks before we work on the rest of this document, get in the details, finalize tables, make sure everything looks good, as well as working with Town Council so that any warrant articles that we approve of are approved of by both boards, but we are also then asking for it to be reviewed to form the Town Council as well. So, so I can go through all these first and then we can kind of go back, back through them. Do you want to do that? It might be the easiest way.
Put a hole, put a hole on a couple of them.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Article Four is Department Revolving Funds. We've reached out to various departments and our town accountant. This is a limitation of how much we can spend in those revolving funds. So, there, limit's there, and I, some of those numbers have been updated for FY '25. That's all revised. Those numbers should be years ago. Article Five is our Water Enterprise Fund Budget, our operating budget. I would note, we do have a bit of an open question with Town Council. If you notice, the second line down says Betterment Collections. We just want to make sure that, we've heard, it's a little bit of a question right now from, from Town Council and the DOR, whether or not we have to get Town Meeting to authorize the use of those betterment funds. So, you'll notice on Article, Article Seven, not to jump ahead, but I will jump ahead, you'll notice there's $200,000 in there for use of the sewer betterment, and that is reflected as, as well in the, in the, in the sewer budget, which is Article Six. So, we're still needing some clarification for that, so we may need to throw in another article that allows for the use of, of the betterment. So, it's either, you do need it, or what it means is that we will be able to basically eliminate what is, was Article Seven here. So, I'm going to ask you to approve of Seven, as well as if we need to throw in another article to address this question about additional, basically Town Meeting allowing us to use betterment funds.
So, you could have two R?
I, I could.
So, we probably want to hear a second.
Yeah, right.
You can always pull.
Right, right. So, it's just, so that may be where, where it has to go, but so it's essentially providing the support for the articles that you already have in front of you, which is the two budgets. So, Article Five is the Water Enterprise Fund. Article Six is an amendment to the FY '24 budget. Basically, what, what Article Six does is it spells out what the capital outlay was in the original budget and basically indicates that we're going to be spending 1.9 million on the Littleton Common Sewer, well, basically to the water work that's, we're already doing that's connected with the Littleton Common Sewer project. So, this is another suggestion from Town Council on this front. Article Seven is that, like what I talked about before, which is the authorization of the use of the sewer betterment revenue. Again, we may, we may not need that depending on who wins the argument between Town Council and DOR. So, we're just trying to be compliant with the law, and so again, there may be another article for the use on the water side with this as well. Stay tuned on that. Article Eight is the FY '25 Sewer Budget. Again, this reviewed with our colleagues at LALWD, providing both the budgets, the FY ' '25 budgets for both the water and sewer budgets, and those forward. Article Nine is essentially, it's a request for the creation of the opioid, what they're calling an opioid recovery remediation stabilization fund. So, by establishing the stabilization fund, we can take monies that we receive from, from court settlements, basically, and be able to utilize that for opioid projects that our Board of Health will be taking the lead on. The only, the thing of note with this is that this is for FY '23, so this is $46,145.28 that was received in FY '23 before DOR was able to update their rules. So, basically, this is a trans, the request is a transfer from free cash, because it's essentially fallen to free cash because it hasn't otherwise been designated for use in the fund. Anything that comes in post FY '23 can go directly into the fund, so, and with that, there are rules that we have to follow when we spend out of that. You'll see under, I think it's Article 15, a separate $46,145.28 request to transfer out of free cash at that time. So, basically, again, what this does is it, it takes the money out of free cash, which is where it, well, those monies eventually fall to, and essentially refund it back into the opioid recovery remediation.
You're right. When we talked about it last week, it totaled by something foul.
That's right, yeah.
So, where's the other 40?
So, the other, so the other part of it, you're right. You're right, right, but two things. One, there was a double count. The state sent us a double payment in FY '24, which we just found out about, and then the FY '24 funding, we can put in just through a journal entry and it can go right into the fund. The problem was prior to that FY '23, there wasn't a mechanism for us to set that money aside. So, this is essentially money that, because it was in sort of an designated fund, fell to free cash. So, that's, we're trying to just fix, fix that and have the monies go back to where they should be. Does that make?
Okay, so this takes effect as of Town Meeting. Therefore, you can put the FY '24 money directly into it.
We could do that, we could do the FY, well, and once the fund's set up, then we can put, put the FY '24 money right into it, correct?
In FY '24?
Yes.
Before, before June 30th?
Correct, before fall. Yeah, right. And that would be the intention.
So, we would expect that to happen, so that.
Right, and if there's any, and then if there's any other subsequent settlements to that, the money just goes right in there. The problem was DOR hadn't caught up with what had been happening with the opioid settlements. Right, so, okay. So, that's Article Nine. Article Ten is a request from the Trust Fund Commissioners to apply the, what they call prudent investor rule for investment of funds of town trust funds. So, that's Article Ten. Article Eleven is also from the Trust Fund Commissioners, and this is to set money aside for some various different projects that include the, let's see, 25, so $40,000 for the Russell Street Elementary School mindfulness room, which we've talked about, it's our Finance Committee. Second one's $25,000, $1,000, and, well, $12,000 for other, is it other school projects? I have to, I'm going to defer to Steve on this one with, if you want, it's your article, I don't want to step over it.
No, the $40,000 is a school project coming from this four or five different funds that are related to a specific school project, and we ask the school department to come up with projects when we give them the money, and this is what they came up with.
Right.
The other one's coming from the Zappy Fund for the human, elder, human services.
It's the animal, animal care program that's, yeah, the other $4,000, thank you, right. So, and that's presuming if there are people who are in the hospital and need someone to care for their dogs or pets, something.
It's, that never builds.
Oh, better, okay, specific to better, okay, okay, all right. Thank you, thank you. Okay, okay. The next two articles are, are new. This is, these are coming from the Conservation Commission. The first one is a request to amend the Oak Hill Stabilization Fund. Basically, what we're doing is adding the term "and maintaining" to this article, which basically is a request from the CONSCOM to allow a greater flexibility as to how the CONSCOM could use those funds. They just want to be able to use it for such things as, you know, for, for mowing or vegetation management, or potentially even construction projects, such as building parking lots so that people can access different conservation areas in town. So, it expands that language, and then affiliated with that is Article 13, which is a request of a $20,000 transfer from the Oak Hill Stabilization Fund for the Conservation Commission to have access to for those types of projects. So.
So, what were the limitations on what they could use the money for?
So, purchase land. So, if you look back on, on page 18, Fred, you'll see it was for the purposes of acquiring conservation land or preserving water quality. So, it was pretty limited, and what, what the CONSCOM guy came back to us with was saying that it was, they felt like their hands were tied because there are other uses that they felt like they could use with this fund, and maintenance, you know, they felt was appropriate.
So, they want to use funds that the taxpayers originally voted to go in there for purchasing land, to maintaining land?
Well, they haven't lost the main, you could still, you could still buy, that's right.
I'm not saying that they're going to, they want more flexibility, which means if they spend it on.
Boardwalks.
X, they don't have it for Y.
Yeah, that's.
And the taxpayers initially, and the Conservation Group initially, when they brought this forward, was for, to build up money to purchase land. So, so everybody understands what it is, that's all.
All right, so that gets us through Article 13. Article 14 is our, is our capital plan. One thing from the capital plan, which totals just under 1.5 million, that came out, that we then transferred, basically transferred over to Article 15, is the replacement of the Long Lake Dock. So, the reason for that change is in keeping, I think there was a CPC meeting that our Finance Committee was, was there at and recommended that we basically put $42,436 back into the CPC fund, so it would go to the CPC fund and then sort of shuttle through there so that it would be a CPC funded project, but we, through free cash, we'd essentially be refunding the CPC.
I, I don't think it belongs here.
Okay.
Because this is basically saying it's a project and the town is voting.
What the vote, what the vote would be is a transfer to this, if you see the front, the, the front line, Steve, it's transferred to the CP, the Community Preservation Commission, Parks and Recre, well, I can maybe put it in a different language, but.
It should be no different than the debt service payment that we're sending over to CPC, so it would just be, I think in their article, that says a deposit, or in that separate article that I sent you last week, that says, here's the extra money that the town's giving for these buckets, and the 42 would just go into the recreation bucket. And then it's up to CPC to say the 42 is to spend on the dock.
That's right, yeah, that's right. So, I think this should come out from here. Okay, we, we can find another article for it, but.
Was this part of the Clean Lakes? When we attended that Clean Lakes?
No, no, this was a, so we, if you think back to last October, we talked about funding more things from the capital out of the CPC. This is one of the things that is CPC eligible that we could fund instead of paying for capital, so we can redirect the capital money into CPC to get the match and still get it.
I, I just know when we got with Clean Lakes, they spoke to obviously weed remediation and things like that, but also some of the Warren docks and things.
No, this was actually a Park and Recs project, not a Clean Lakes project.
Yeah, this is a separate, this is separate from.
But it couldn't be.
But just thinking about, I mean, the stuff that, as Fred pointed out, the stuff that they want money for in Article 13 also sounds like money that could come from CPC rather than local stabilization, right? Fund project, boardwalk construction in parking lots, why would we do that out of Oak Hill versus CPC money?
It's a good debate.
Again, it came, it came from the Conservation Commission, so I think it's a separate conversation with Chase, so, so, but I did want to flag that because that is different than the last time we talked about it with the FINCOM. So, the other items in Article 15 are grant writing services, which we talked about, $45,000 for an update to our classification and compensation plan. I think I had the wrong number in here for the special injury leave. That's the whole amount. I think we were knocking that down, Steve, I think it was 125. Yeah, I think 125, so please amend that in your notes. So, because we, we have certain thresholds that we have to stay under here for, for our fiscal policy planning. The next is the opioid transfer, which we just talked about. That's so, because that fell to free cash, it'd be a transfer from free cash. And this now, I guess, will be the last item, which is the, we've had a few, I think I have to call this out because there've been a few housing projects or developments in town where they make contributions for affordable housing, and we have two, two accounts that we're looking to close out and basically making a transfer to the CPC for that, under their Housing Resources Reserve. So, probably see the same, the same logic, so we probably would cut that out and put that into there.
Karen, do you agree, Karen?
I do, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, so it's again, more, and essentially money that then goes to the affordable housing component of the CPC. So, so basically, with that table, the last two items will go out to another article. We'll amend the transfer into the special injury leave from 155,000 down to 125,000. So, that's where we are with that.
Right, Andrew, three questions. To Mark's point, are we going to, are we going to try on Article 13 to make that go through CPC?
You know, that, it's up to you, you know, I'm the passerby right now because it was asked by, but I think this is the first time you've talked about it, so it's worthy, worthy conversation.
Is it just like an oversight that wasn't thought of, or is it, was that not thought of, I guess, is the point?
Well, I think, you know.
It's a recent one, we did it the other night.
Yeah, and I, you know, we try to make, we try to make the schedule as clear to everybody as we can, and I think that, that as it relates to this particular topic, I think that Amy and. You know, that's, it's up to you, you know, I'm the pass through right now because it was asked by, but I think this is the first time you've talked about it, so it's worthy, worthy conversation.
Is it just like an oversight, it wasn't thought of, or is it, was that not thought of, I guess, is the point?
Well, I think, you know.
It's a recent lie we did.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, we try to make, we try to make the schedule as clear to everybody as we can. And I think that, as it relates to this particular topic, I think that Amy and CONSCOM have kind of been wrestling with the Oak Hill piece for a while because I think they thought that what town, what was being presented at town meeting was, was one thing and what they could actually use it as was another. So I think they're looking at this as a way to fix something that they thought they should have had more, more say over, basically.
But to Fred's point, it doesn't exactly build the coffers of our land purchase.
Well, we're not, we're not putting money into that fund anymore, are we, either, are we? I thought that was funded from the cell towers or.
In essence, yeah, that's right.
So there's no new money going in, we're just going to.
What's the, what's the balance right now?
I think the balance is like about 160, 160,000, which is fine for maintenance, not fine for Y.
I thought we converted it to, to a revolving fund or?
No, we had to take it out of the revenue, out of the account and do a stabilization fund.
That's right, that's what it's, the change was to the stabilization fund, because it couldn't be in a revolving fund.
So we should still be putting money into the stabilization fund for the cell tower revenues? Yeah, okay.
There may be else I'm catching up to do next year. With the opioid stuff that fell to free cash last year that we can do anything with, and then, what was the other piece?
There was the opioid piece and then it was the, well, the CPC housing, yeah, the contributions, I think it's.
Between those two, basically ran out of free cash to use.
Got it. Right, right. I mean, the other thing is too, remember, it's just, it would be 20,000 this year and, you know, they can kind of see where it goes for them and where it lands. And so, you know, you're not committing to this for the long term per se. Every year you'll have a chance to look at it again and see how it goes this year. Okay. Article 16 is a request to expand the, the Article 10 from the June 12, 2021 annual town meeting. This is for, originally for the design services of the senior center. We've now completed that stage and we're looking to expand it to allow for construction to be allowed out of this fund. This basically allows us to close out the fund and put 267,907.10 towards the construction balance on the project. So we didn't need all of our design services. And again, this gives us a little greater flexibility on the construction of the senior center project.
I think we should, sorry, we should check that number, that 267, because I think we spent everything out of the stabilization account first before we spent this money.
Okay.
Because we haven't borrowed this money yet.
I think that sounds, that sounds right, yeah.
So it should be a whole million five and not 267.
Okay, to make it all, to make it all eligible?
Yeah, because we haven't spent it yet.
Okay.
We spent stabilization on the design.
Okay, okay.
Because we didn't want to borrow.
Okay, okay. Well, and I think maybe the commitment to both groups is that whatever we're going to be spending would be the balance, you know, would be the balance on it, so.
So that's what you were going with, is the balance?
Yeah, just the eligible, yeah, whatever eligible portion of it, we're just expanding it, so whatever hasn't otherwise been spent.
I thought we moved all the money that was in that fund out last time, at last time meeting. I thought we closed down.
Remember? No, I think this, this was still something we needed to come back for because it wasn't.
It was supposed to be on the last line.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I can, I can check on that afterward, Mark, but.
I thought we did it at the very last minute because we had to wait till the very last minute to know what the exact balance was.
Oh, I think you might be, and I, but you might be. Let's see, I can come back.
That was, that was the.
The senior center stabilization.
Stabilization account.
That's what it was.
This is the borrowing article.
That's right.
Okay.
It's just a separate, so you're right that it was related to the senior center, but it was a senior center stabilization.
Stabilization.
Yeah, okay.
So this only requires a majority vote, even though it's changing the amount of borrowing?
It's, it's not the amount of borrowing, what it's changing is the definition and expanding the definition.
It says increase the amount of borrowing from 1 million to 1.5 million.
Yeah. Well, no, that, that was already done, so this is only to amend the vote that's taken.
You're just adding "and construction," right?
What's that?
You're just adding the words "and construction."
And construction, that's it, that's all we're doing. And if, and if we have to make it, and if that needs to be a two-thirds vote, we'll be working on that with town council, if they need to do that. Article 17 is funding for Littleton Community Television in their budget. This includes small capital project on their end. So that's a standard item that we have in. Next item is Article 18, which is our compensation grid. We are requesting a 2.5% salary schedule adjustment and the schedule should already be completed, but we just didn't feel comfortable putting it in at this time, so we just had to look at that again and make sure that's right. But generally speaking, that's, that's what we're looking at. Keep in mind, when we did the budget for FY24, that was a 2% pullback increase compared to last year, so. Article 19 is the, is the transfer from the capital, or transfer into the capital stabilization fund of about 1.5 million. So that, again, is consistent with our policies. Separately, we're also proposing a withdrawal from the capital stabilization fund, and that's going to happen in a later article, and that's for the purchase of 32, 36 King Street. This was something that we did in last year's capital plan. So when we put together our capital plan for FY23, we had set, set money aside for that. And that comes up in Article 20. So Article 20 is, and this is a new item, this is the, the spending down of the $657,000 from the capital stabilization fund to pay down a portion of the 36 King Street building purchase, just the purchase. So it's 3.5 million. This reduces that cost by 657,000, again, consistent with the capital plan that we had, our FY23 capital plan, and before we put the final debt in place for this project. So reduces our overall cost.
I think in the description, Ryan, maybe just put the math, we purchased up a 3 million five, this is going to reduce the purchase price by 657,000, it will bond 2.9 something. Makes it kind of clear.
I think that's a good suggestion, okay.
Yeah, because I think that'll help, because the way I read it now is it sounds like we're paying less. We're not, we're still paying the 3.5.
Yeah, if I show the math, I do know. Make it clear, okay. Okay, I will make that note. Okay, it's Article 20. Article 21 is the creation of a school building stabilization fund. So we're moving right along with our Shaker Lane school building project. We're going to be meeting at 8:30 tomorrow, making recommendations on a designer for MSBA. So part of that in thinking ahead is setting money aside, so this is a request to put in, to create the school building fund and then make a deposit of about 1.2 million into that fund through free cash. So again, specifically, we're trying to keep in mind Shaker Lane Elementary School and that the stabilization fund could typically, well, would only be used for construction of school facilities.
Excuse me, Ryan, a couple of weeks ago, we heard that they only had two, basically two bidders.
Right.
And the MS.
MSBA.
MSBA requires three. And we put in, the schools or whoever put in a request to allow for only two, is that okay, or are we still?
Yeah, so it always depends on who you get as a designer. So we're working with an OPM and asked what their perspectives were on both the design firms that did put in bids. So in, in this case, both of the, the design firms that we have are highly, highly qualified. So we've talked a little bit about it in one of our subcommittee meetings that Chuck participated in, and we felt comfortable making that recommendation to the MSBA that both of those designers would be acceptable. So the one thing that we did ask was, and that we'll be asking of the MSBA tomorrow when we meet, but done this, that the committee has the opportunity to interview both designers and get a sense as to what their strengths, weaknesses are, as well as, you know, what their experiences are, because what you're, in designing an elementary school, that's one set of skills versus if you're trying to design for high school, that kind of thing. So we'll have that opportunity to discuss that with them, but we think because both firms are, you know, have a lot of experience in working on school building projects, we're confident that either of the two would meet our needs. So sound right, Chuck?
Yep.
Okay.
Can you explain what's the advantage of having a school building stabilization fund rather than putting it into a stabilization fund? Based on the senior center stabilization fund, I think it took three town meetings to get rid of, to add it, move money and get rid of it when we were done, versus just putting it into a general stabilization fund.
And we're putting this money there that we're planning to use for the schools.
It's to, it's to encumber it so that it can't, I mean, we could do as you say, but we're wanting to specifically encumber.
It's such a massive bill.
But it's no, yeah, it can still be moved out by town meeting anyway, so.
But it just takes, it just have to get it out.
No more than putting it into any other stabilization fund.
It's a regular, but I think Brian's point, it dedicates it to the school buildings. And if, you know, it's a renovation and we've thrown more money in there than we should, which isn't going to likely happen, we still have roofs to do and it could be spent on that. It's the school building, so.
So.
I don't think, I don't think we're going to have to run into the same thing with the senior center stabilization.
So we're planning that this is.
We're just trying to pick, catch up.
No, but.
Because it's always school projects we can use.
So we're planning this fund lasts forever?
No, that's something we can discuss.
You know, and the cost of schools now, it's not a bad idea.
Well, no, we're never going to hit whatever the, we're never going to hit the balance.
60 million.
So, so the question is, if we're going to have this fund and we're going to close it out in a few years, why have it rather than just put it in the general stabilization fund and have a policy that says we're putting the money in for it and not taking it out except for that?
Because policies are easy to override. What we're suggesting is.
Somebody getting tidy for a project, right.
Boards change and people's memories change and.
Well, I have a better idea for that money.
If the six.
But it doesn't matter, it still can be moved out. It's no different.
If the 657 that we just did in Article 20, if it wasn't for, you know, a recent history that these boards said that that money is going in there for that purpose, that could have been used for anything. And the future board could say, no, why are we doing that? Right? This is dedicated to schools. I mean, you had asked the question before, why isn't it going into the debt exclusion stabilization account, well, simply because that could be used for any exclusion that comes up, not specifically for the schools.
Okay.
And that's a perfect segue to go into Article 22, use of debt exclusion stabilization fund. Thank you for setting that up, Peter, okay. So this is.
Throw your softball everyone.
Yeah, thank you, so, all right, now you're smiling, look at that. Okay, so this is, we have excluded debt that exclude, is excluded under Proposition Two and a Half, and we're proposing to spend approximately $350,000 to reduce that debt service cost. That's built into our budget model and is, is part of, part of our plan for this year. So that's Article, Article 22. Article 23 is the appropriation transportation for company funds. These are essential, this is essentially revenue we receive from Uber and Lyft, a portion of Uber and Lyft rides that I think are generated from the town. This is only about, it's $2,604.17, but the state requires us to then transfer these funds annually over to DPW for the maintaining of such, well, maintaining crosswalk road markings and performance of other road improvements. Doesn't go that far with DPW, but nonetheless, it's pertinent revenue for us, so that's good. The next article, I just, I wanted to just show, you know, the finance committee that we were able to, this is an article that we're going, we're going to cut because we're going to put this, this is that contribution from other host community agreements, from the Grimes Lane and Jones Meadow projects, that we're going to now contribute directly to CPC. So we don't, no longer need that article. Article 24 is our CPC budget. All of this is highlighted because this is basically what we had from last year. I'm going to be working with Carolyn and my staff to finalize that, but this, you know, Carolyn, I'll, I'll leave it to you, kind of give an update on where we are, if that's okay. But, and I think, once Carolyn gives her update, then we can talk a little bit about potentially at least the Webster property that we may be looking to purchase out of CPC as well. So Carolyn, I'll give an update if you want to provide it, at least we can see where we are.
Yeah, sure, so we had our meeting last Wednesday, and unfortunately, we didn't get to finish. I wasn't able to attend, but I guess we resumed long at the end. So there's still a few things that we need to, to address. We didn't get to vote on the blended funds, but we still need to do that to have those come in. We wanted to rescind a couple of projects, and that's not critical, so we could hold off on that, but it's just some accounting Michelle Reynolds and I had talked about. We are still expecting the Long Lake Dock project to come in, and the Webster land was another one I was going to ask about, because I wasn't sure if we'd be going to see that or not. So I guess we need to know, like, when is the drop dead date? Do we need to have all this done by, you know, besides ASAP?
Besides ASAP. So this actually, the document actually goes through the printer on, on Monday, April 8. So, you know, the, what, what we also have the option to do, Carolyn, is to make a substitute motion on the floor of town meeting. My sense is sort of the big rock in this would be the potential Webster purchase, so we may be better off just holding off on that until, and then combining the rest of the CPC budget with that. So I don't know, Gary, if you want to give an update on, on that, because that really is, as far as the CPC budget, one of the primary items that, you know, would really kind of change the budget.
For the Webster property?
Correct.
Yes, so the, currently working through a second appraisal, potentially some changes to the land and how it's going to be accessed, things like that. And the second of the Littleton Conservation Trust is fronting the money for that. And trying to make it, and the property owners, the Websters, wanted to be able to use CPC, and I think the town did as well, and I think we, it was one of our big hangups. So we're, the second appraisal hopefully comes back at a, an agreeable number that the Websters can work with for the town, so we'd be able to have access to the CPC fund. So that's kind of the number we're waiting on for you to be able to make a determination if that's something you would commit to. So that's probably going to be an article that we're, our two boards are voting really close to the floor, on the floor or the meeting right before, we just don't know in that appraisal. I know we have.
May 1st.
May 1st, that was the deadline we put on this, so hopefully that appraisal comes through, we can vet it, we have a number. And if it's something that works for the Webster family and, and the town and CPC, since it will be their article, that we can vote it on, on town floor. If not, at that time, it'll be something we, we potentially would revoke, obviously, if it, if all parties were not interested in the way it's going. So that's kind of where we're at. We wanted to make sure that it made it on the town meeting, and hopefully that, this appraisal comes through with a better number.
So what's different that justifies another spending money on another appraisal?
Well, we didn't spend the money.
No, I don't care.
So, well, that's important.
The trust, I don't care. What's different that justifies somebody, somebody spending money on another appraisal?
I mean, I, you want to speak to some of that, Mark?
I think they have a slightly different plan, access, I'm not sure exactly what all is ending up being different that's presented to the appraiser.
So what's being appraised is different from what was being appraised before?
I believe that's true.
Okay, that's fine.
And even if it isn't.
It's okay.
Even if it isn't, if the town, it still was able to use CPC funds based on a higher appraisal.
I mean, that's like going out and getting multiple bids. Sure. So, a couple of suggestions, and I'm assuming that you are going to do that anyways, but the purchase of the Webster property should be a separate article and not incorporated in this one CPC article? In case that piece of the puzzle fails, the whole article is not going to go down?
You'd have to amend it out or put it in there as a specific.
I'd put it as a separate, CNC article. That's fine, we can, that's acceptable.
Yes, I would agree with that.
And the other thing is, is we're going to need a separate article for those blended funds, the money's going in that the town's putting in. So that's not. Okay. That's the thing I sent you the other day. Okay, okay.
Oh, to the buckets?
Yeah. Because all we're doing, we're sending money over, saying it's going to. I see, okay, okay. That's fine. Specifically for. That's fine. This is, yeah, I think, you know, that what's happening with the CPC this year isn't, isn't a standard year, so like, you know, we have to make some other separate warrant articles to reflect that. That's fine. And back into the Webster property. So it's, from what I'm understanding, it's definitely a CPC article, CPC votes to accept it as a purchase, which means that if the appraisal comes in, even if it's a higher amount than the 630, that the Websters have to accept that purchase price for us to use CPC money.
And then CPC would have to.
And if it comes in a dollar more, if the Websters want a dollar more than what that appraisal is, we can't use CPC money, so this article just goes. Is that everybody's understanding?
Yes, you are.
That's, okay.
And so at that point, the moderator.
The article should be pulled.
Yes. All I'm saying, saying, and that moves it, but that's not a time when someone can say, oh, let's on the spur of the moment find a different funding source. That's off the table at that point.
It would be outside the four corners of the article.
Indeed, indeed, yep.
Does everybody understand?
Right, this was the funding source that the family agreed to want to use with the second appraisal, so there's a risk, obviously, but hopefully, I mean, there was enough, you know, we got all that time meeting. I mean, there's, it's a piece of property the conservation wants, they said it checked a lot of the boxes. And I think the big hangup was obviously your board, especially, was the CPC not being able to use a funding source that was designated for that.
If it works, great.
Yeah. So hopefully, you know, the new plans and everything come through, we'll see.
I'll just say, if your board would like some help with the zoom bombing, I've got some expertise in zoom bomb defense, so if your board or any other board would like some help with that, I'm happy to help. There are things you, I run meetings all the, all the time, there are things you can do to defend ahead of time and during the meeting. Open up. Thank you. Did you just say this is old language? This is the, this is last year's language, yeah. Yeah, so that, I probably wouldn't, or wouldn't even necessarily, I think Carolyn thinks at least for the cap, the capital or the projects that you would have that were, so you have from Parks and Recreation, the dock and the resurfacing of the tennis courts, were those voted on?
Not the docks, we haven't heard that yet, but the basketball court, yes.
The basketball court.
They could get through the ball on that.
Okay, and then there was the, not, wait, the 10,000, the 10,000 for cemetery preservation.
Yeah, and then there were 9,000 for historic markers, so there's two.
That's, yeah, so when I was.
Okay, and then gray stones, so we have two historic projects.
Okay.
And then there's two open space projects.
Okay.
There's, there's two open space projects from Clean Lakes.
And three, actually, three from Clean Lakes as well.
Well, one of them was recreation, I think, though.
Yeah, we have five other recreation and open space projects.
Okay.
But I have, we have those, I can send those to you.
Okay, okay. Well, and again, I think we could, I mean, for the suggestions made tonight, the purchase of the Webster property will be a separate article, and then the blended funds transfer will be a separate article. But at least in terms of nuts and bolts, for what you would be recommending, if you would, you know, have another meeting.
Yes.
And then, you know, and then we can kind of proceed from there. But we would be adding two other articles for the suggestion tonight. So you would probably be borrowing for the Webster, given how many money in the bucket.
Yes, yes.
So can I make the suggestion that that article will be for the CPC article for the purchase, because they're going to have to have the first year debt service as part of their expenses in '24?
Kiss away.
Why? We've got it in the right order, right?
Yeah. The blended funds, Steve, the blended, I'm along the same line, the blended funds should probably go before as well. Yeah.
Explain to me the debt piece, if the money's in the, in the bucket currently.
So depending on what the appraisal is, they don't, I would assume, and Carolyn correct it, they don't want to spend down cash to purchase this property. Say it comes in a million dollars.
But that would, that would be a vote by your board before town meeting, so, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the article should be moved up anyway.
So I think what Steve is saying is they, they're voting that they're going to allocate, they'll say a million dollars of CPC money to this over a period of time, but they need to say they're going to spend $60,000 or whatever the debt service is out of this year's budget. That's what needs to be in.
Which is the spending article.
That's what needs to be in.
Sort of like your.
But if you intend to borrow for the purchase, then the Webster article needs to be a borrowing article.
You have to state that, this language that has to state.
Yes. And it'd be a two-thirds vote. It's a two-thirds vote anyways, doesn't change anything, because the land purchase is two-thirds.
Thank God we're not going to have to hook each other, this, this meeting, because we're going to need it.
So, so that means things like the tennis courts that we voted last time to be a borrowing will be in their article, in their capital request, too?
Out of the blended funds with sending that money over to them, and then they're paying the debt service, sending it back to the town. That would probably get them some more money.
No, but like, I'm just saying, like, in the budget here, I understand this is last year's budget, but there's the open space debt service and things, there's going to be a tennis court debt service line.
Yep.
In there.
So what's the logic behind the debt service? If the money's there, what's the logic to pay?
I don't know if they have that kind of cash.
You don't, you don't know what the number is, number one.
Do you have that money in the open space?
Number two, you don't know if they have it.
I thought we did. I don't know what the logic was either, but.
It's up to your committee, if you want to spend.
That's all I'm saying, I think when you vote, I mean.
That's fine, I mean, we were hoping we had some extra money for, you know, to, to leverage the state.
How much do you have in the open space bucket?
I don't know.
I mean, what if the appraisal comes in a million dollars?
Oh, no, we don't have that, no. No, oh, sorry, I.
Okay, so maybe a borrowing piece to the.
Yeah, well, there will be.
The other thing, Gary, is if you spend that down, and.
An extra.
Wilson property up on, on the 19 comes available, Gary's farm stand comes available.
Wilkins.
They don't have the money to fund.
It's not mine.
Correct.
No, I, I understand.
If you have the money there and another piece comes out.
Sure.
You could do a second piece through borrowing, but if you pull everything out, they don't have the ability to fund.
Back the loan.
For several years until you build it back up. So you need to be a little bit cognizant of what you're doing there, that's all.
So whatever, we do get the purchase price. And if it's a borrowing article, then you work with the treasurer's office, kind of look at how much the bucket is, how much you get in the bucket each time, and they could work on how long a place the debt for, you know, just keep.
If we can afford a three.
Keep manning it, you know, just roll it over like we're doing with the tennis courts, we'll fund it for five, ten, whatever years.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Can we take the 140 that's left in Oak Hill and fund it over to CPC so we get the match and are more prepared for other purchases? Because I think that's real, I mean, going back to Mark's point, I think that's what it was there for, was for purchases and where, you know, I mean, can we do that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I have a question. I can go all the way back to Article 13, if we want to have a discussion.
That seems like a good thing to do in November.
I just don't, I'm just, just don't try to ramble around, what's the, without creating too many of these funds and these stabilizations, it gets a little bit out of hand. I understand wanting to identify money, but if there's a funding source for this exact thing, why are we creating another one? And that's what I wanted to know, if there's CPC's putting, has a restriction that is outside of boardwalks, vegetation management, improved parking lots, if all that can fall under the CPC bucket, why are we creating another bucket for it? That's all.
So, yeah, so the bucket already exists, so there's already, the Oak Hill Stabilization Fund already exists and.
For purchase of land.
That's one of, that's one of the potential uses, yes.
But the maintenance side, this other thing, it seemed like it's too CPC-ish to me, that's all, when I, when I read it, and I think you too, so that's all.
Yeah, it's. One of the examples that Amy, because I thought Amy thought this, one of the examples that she said, they want to pay for a quick appraisal. That's not CPC type of thing.
But they asked for that, no, they did ask for CPC money to do that.
Yeah, land preservation funding, $30,000 they've asked for. It's a finite list of things that they can ask for, but one is an appraisal if they need to do it, something towns around us do, Acton has one.
And CPC can fund it?
And we can fund that.
Wow. But they have to have six months to get it.
No, they're asking for it now to go and do something so that Amy could spend it over the next fiscal year. They've never asked for it before, so Amy doesn't have access to that right now. They're asking for it at this town meeting, I believe, to have 30,000 put into that from the open space bucket into a conservation commission bucket that they can.
That's where she was using the Oak Hill pick.
That's something else that.
The Oak Hill, I think she's looking for more maintenance projects and having it set aside for that, that she can use, you know, essentially as needed.
It depends on the definition of maintenance, too, because that's a hangup with CPC. You know, you can put in a parking lot, but you can't fix your potholes, yeah.
Yeah. And then I think with Oak Hill, it gives them a little bit more flexibility to probably do things like fix a pothole route, so, I think that's partially why they were looking for that versus CPC, because CPC is, as you said, Carolyn, more restrictive.
Does preserving water quality fall under CPC?
Well.
Well, invasive, like the invasives, we can, we can use CPC money for that. That's why all the invasive projects came to us this year.
But you don't have an overarching ability to spend it on preserving water quality in any shape, it has to be specific?
It may have to be project based, yeah, because that was one of the things that we looked at, that I looked at for, on behalf of the Clean Lakes Committee, because they had, they were looking to have other projects that they could potentially be looking at, and that's when we said, well, let's look at some of the other examples for CPC, and we found a number of them in other communities, you know, for things like, you know, water chestnut removal, that kind of thing. So we really were able to take some of the standard things that the Clean Lakes Committee were working on on an annual basis, and it fit nicely into what a CPC funding source. So that was, I mean, that was good, good news to, if that was the case. My guess is they're going to be coming back to you on a more, you know, maybe slightly different projects from you in a year now that they know that that's a funding source, because there's certainly, certainly a need on that front, so.
Sorry, got us off track. It was still on 24, right?
Yeah, yeah, so I think.
I did want to mention, Anna just reminded me, and I didn't go far enough down, that there's a $90,000 for rental assistance program for housing, which is also, I think, at the last meeting, so that will be there as well.
Sure.
And that's strictly for the rental assistance program.
And that's part of, that's part of the standard, I mean, I think some of the standard things, it's asked.
Yes, we've just have kind of broken it out from the, you know, the.
Separate from the housing reserve?
From the, yes.
Can I ask why?
For the, I don't have the project with me. When, you know, last year, we had the question on why we're just sweeping the money from, from CPC, and we asked if they would come with a specific, if they had a specific project to fund. So the 90,000 is what they would expect to spend on the rental assistance program. So that is, it's specifically for that, it's a line item just for that, it can't be used for, you know, 260 Foster Street or anything like that.
But they're sitting on a million dollars in their fund?
Right, which they have plans for, for these other projects to have on the road, 260 Foster Street, what comes up with that. So this was our compromise.
So your committee's good with that?
They voted on it at the last meeting, yes.
And how's, how do we feel about?
We're about, but these projects are, but the money's already here, nothing we can do about it.
So the question is, do we want to put more money into that budget? Because once it goes, we lose control.
We have, we've said previously that we didn't want to send any more money to the housing trust until we saw a budget.
They presented you a budget, Carolyn?
Yes. Did you share it with me?
Sure. Affordable Housing Trust, I'm assuming.
Yeah, he's in Affordable Housing Trust. So one of the things that has transpired over the last six months is that we have been able to create an action plan, as well as go through the financials with the help of Michelle to really make sure that every number ties and to make sure that we know what it is that we want to contribute to future projects. One of the things that came forward as a result of this whole process is that Stuart Sagnor, who is the head of the Community Preservation Council, I believe it is, he said that there should be a grant agreement with every single project that is funded by the town, and so we were actually next on the agenda for the CPC to talk about that particular grant agreement between the CPC and Affordable Housing Trust when we resume block. So I would request that the CPC puts back on their next agenda so that we can talk about that. So it is essentially an existing agreement model example that can be used, and it's something that the Affordable Housing Trust, when we talked about it at our last meeting, said, yeah, this looks like a really good model that we can use so that when we go forward and request monies from CPC, there's an established reason for those dollars. And I think it makes complete sense. This is something I had hoped to be able to present and talk about at a future meeting with select board and ping com, so that you have the action plan in front of you, you know the kinds of things that we're talking about using the monies for. So it is in the works, and so that was one of the reasons why we felt comfortable moving forward with this $90,000 request.
When you do get that plan, if you could schedule something to Ryan or at least get us a hot coffee oven?
Absolutely. The, the action plan is done, the, the big holdup, quite frankly, has just been staff time to be able to work on the financials to make sure that everything ties, and I recognize that, you know, we're just a minuscule piece of what the town requires from a financial perspective. So I was hoping to get that done sometime, you know, in the next 60 days. If you all can put a rush on it, then fine.
So how much is in the housing bucket? It's zero, basically, right?
Yeah, it's like 20, well, it was $25,000 after last town meeting, so it's a little bit more than that.
And how much do we plan on putting in? How much is allocated to it each year?
I think we're putting in about 20% of the 1% surcharge.
So like 80,000?
Yeah, and, and less than that from the state match.
So you're basically wiping it out again?
Well, no, there's also the money that's going. Well, no, there's also the money that's going in from the Grimes, the two Grimes.
Both 56?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
Okay, so a little more work to do on the Community Preservation Committee, but we'll be working with Karen, we'll give you updates on that as it comes along. Article 25 is to fund the rehabilitation of the 36 King Street. So just to give everybody a quick update, the bid documents are out, the sub bids are in, and we're waiting for the final bid to come forward. I think it's April 3rd is when that's due. So the presumption here is that we will not have something, a number that we'll be able to send out to, in, you know, to every household, that there will be a substitute motion on the floor of town meeting, because I'd like to buy a little bit more time so that the Select Board and Finance Committee have a chance to review what the bids come in as and determine what you'd like to do with that. Keep in mind, the bids that are out right now have a bid alternate for the replace, the first bid alternate is for the replacement of the roof, and the second bid is for solar tubes on the second floor, I think it's six solar tubes to bring light into the sort of open area that's where the school administration is. So I think this, I don't want to, I want to bring this back to the Fincom and the Select Board and get your feedback as to how you'd like to proceed.
That's cheaper than windows, I'm assuming?
Well, yeah, yeah, and I think it's also too, it, I think one of the things that we've heard from both the schools and PSC is about trying to find ways to bring natural light, and one of the alternatives that they looked, or one of the options they looked at was upstairs, when you look down on the, at the end of the hallway, there's, there's just one sort of, one window at the top, and they talked about trying to open that up, but unfortunately, that's just where the stairs are. I think, I think we had seen that when we had gone out there, chucking, like, oh, it'd be great to put a window there, but unfortunately, you can't, you can't do it with the structure that's behind it. So again, the plan is to come back to you, and that basically what will be here and what will go out in, in the warrant report will be a motion that will come forward at the floor of town meeting, because we're, I want to have that conversation with you and the Finance Committee in the meantime.
So what's, what's the earliest of a perfect schedule we could get people in there?
Well, let's see, so the, you know, town meeting would have to allocate, allocate the funds, the funds would technically, technically not be available until July 1st, so, but we could still be working to execute the contracts, get everything ready to go, so where the bids are already out, I mean, you, I mean, you could be looking, you know, early, early July start, you know, if the money's available and, you know, and I think we'd have the authorization to sign those contracts because town meeting already had approval of it, so, you know, I mean, you're talking July. And then from there, that's about a nine, 10-month renovations, about that?
By people, he meant.
Yeah, I meant, I meant our bodies.
Oh, I, yeah, but, yeah, but, so from, so from July, take another 10, 10 months, roughly speaking, from there.
So around the same time as the senior senator was expected, right around?
Um, roughly speaking, yeah, so, so, yeah, so, right, so that's, that's, that's the plan for Indian Hill. Again, the number, we're not going to put a number in the document that goes out to everybody, but we're going to have a substitute motion, and the substitute motion will be discussed in, from, with the Fincom and the Select Board as to how we're going to proceed. And I would note that our, our plan, at least in terms of what we want to propose forward in terms of its funding, would be a transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund. So that's, that's how that would be funded, be no, no debt on, on any of the renovations, at least that's part of the plan right now, so. The Article 26 is a recommendation from the Nagog Hill Adult Working Group, to be a vote to declare the Nagog Hill Orchard as surplus property. We currently have a question out to town council regarding whether or not this needs to be a town meeting vote or a vote of the, the Select Board. I think either way, it's a question for the Select Board, how you want to handle it. I don't think we've heard back from them on this, they were working on it, I think, the last time, but I wanted to at least have this here as a placeholder and know that I don't want to speak for, for Karen or Matthew, but as I understand, the working group has, has voted to recommend the sale of, of the property, is that so?
That's correct.
This is following through on that. So again, still an open question of whether or not the Select Board has the right to declare that surplus property or not, or even if you do, whether you still want to go to town meeting and kind of...
So even if the Select Board votes to declare it surplus, we do want to go to town meeting to, to, to vote for...
So the question we have at town council is to say, is that the right, is that the, is it, is it the right of the Select Board to make that decision? So it could be your right to say it had, and, and that, and you may just want to leave it at that and make that determination. Alternatively, if, if, even if that is the case, you might still want to put the question up to, to town meeting. I, I don't know, that's, that's up to you as a board.
But we, we also decided we want to ask the town to...
Correct.
To get permission to sell for a couple reasons.
Right, and, and I guess that's a question too for the working group and what you want to do and how you want to telegraph that message too, so it's, it's, you know, that's just a question on that front, but, you know, it's...
So the way this is written, Ryan, in the article, is town meeting's voting here to sell it, and it's authorizing the Select Board to just do the sale, so it's not going back to town meeting a second time? Is that the intention?
That is not how, that is not our intention. I don't believe.
I thought that was an open question.
To go back a second time?
Yeah, no, my, my understanding was that we, we hadn't closed on that yet, we wanted to see what town council came back with in terms of process, but that there was some question as to whether it, it made sense to go back a second time, already having received approval, to get approval for the approval.
And we asked to wait in the back of town council on that.
Yeah, and then our, it's a good time probably for...
We could revisit that on Wednesday.
The rest of the members, I guess, get spun up, because I'm definitely out of the loop on exactly, I mean, what led the board to that decision and all that, just the whole methodology.
Yeah, we're ready to talk to them.
So it's a town council, council, chime in. The whole property, is that, were we trying to take out pieces?
There's, yeah, there's a, there's a whole, another thread about whether or not the Upper House and Barn are included, because they are not part of the APR. We're trying to get the Department of Revenue to add those structures to the APR, they're very reticent, we got Jamie Eldridge involved, there, like, there's a whole lot of context that we can give you that's way out of the bounds of this conversation right now, so. But basically, what we said was, yes, that anybody who wants it needs to take the entire APR property, and the barn and the house will have to deal with in some other way, or it will be included, depending on how the APR discussion goes.
Most of the market research indicated that folks who wanted the APR land wanted or needed access to the upper barn and the house, and so we're trying to find a way to include all of those.
Basically to protect those structures from...
Right, but with...
From changing.
Without having them open to being flipped or, you know, go in a direction we don't want them as a town to go in afterwards, but there's good news in terms of, there's some good developments in terms of the indications about what we can put into the APR, looks like the upper barn will be able to go in.
With the lower lot, I don't want to go totally...
But the houses...
That's conservation land, so that's...
Separate?
Separate.
That's good to hear, because that's a very...
Not part of the deal.
Okay.
If the, if the working group has voted to sell it, and if the Select Board votes to sell it, and then we bring it to town meeting and the town says no, what then?
We have to go back to square one and start like looking for a leasee, which is, we have had long, long discussions about as a working group, and don't, we do not believe it's a good, it's a good option.
And the market research doesn't support it.
Yeah, right. We've been a terrible landlord, basically.
So, well, nevermind, it's all talk.
Very happy to like talk to you for hours and hours, just to like spread the misery.
Do we want to have any thoughts to encumbering the proceeds? You know, should, assuming it goes through and we get some money, I would think that that land purchase might be a great place for that money to get encumbered too.
So given the state of the house, I am sure that the proceeds of that are going to be part of the negotiation on the sale. So the, the working group isn't anticipating this is going to be a windfall for the town. We are trying to protect the, protect the property as best we can to continue its mission as a, as an orchard and agricultural land, and maintain it as a place where Littleton can enjoy it. So all those things being, being true, we're not looking for the highest bidder, we're looking for someone to invest and maintain it. But, but, so I think that, yes, sure, we can talk about encumbering it, but the first thing we have to do is get someone who's interested in it, and I believe that there's a strong likelihood that a portion or some of the funds that we get from that are going to be rolled up into maintenance or repairs or some kind of structural give back or something in order to, in order to make the deal happen.
But what, whatever's left over?
Sure.
Assuming anything.
Yeah. Sure, I mean, absolutely, yeah.
I think that makes sense.
Build the gazebo in that lower field, I'm just saying.
You really, you really don't ask for that lower field either.
I'm telling you, it's beautiful property.
And thank you for all the work that you all have been doing. Really, really glad not to have been involved.
You meet a lot, I know that.
We do, and, and actually, we got 15 responses to our RFI, so instead of one, which is the last time we sent it out. And it was, there were three or four that were very highly qualified applicants, so we are encouraged by that.
And I would, I would just add, the vote for, to recommend selling was unanimous.
Are those meetings recorded?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. Article 27, I'll defer this one to Karen, we talked a little bit about this, the shade tree committee is still working on some language for an article here, but Karen, if you want...
Yeah, so they're meeting right now to, to work, to work on finalizing a draft, but it's a fairly modest bylaw that I've seen so far. It codifies the tree warden and the tree warden's duties, it establishes this shade tree committee as the tree committee under mass general law, which I guess is missing. The bylaw would apply to public shade trees, but not those that are under Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, or Conservation Commissions, AAGES, but it does establish a policy of cooperation with those groups. And it does, from Fincom's perspective, it does seek to establish a tree fund, which would be a revolving fund, which would take donations, potentially someday, if there were to be any fines levied, it would, it would, you know, the money would go in there.
Okay, Article 28 is a placeholder to fund collective bargaining agreements. We don't anticipate that to, by two weeks from now when this goes to the printer, that we will have any agreements in hand, but there is a possibility by the time we get to May 7th, we'll be able to provide a substitute motion with a resolution on some of that. Keep in mind, all that will be, will be just the amounts, the equivalent of the first year of funding for those contracts. So again, placeholder's there and ready to go if, if necessary. Article 29 is to authorize the withdrawal from the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health. Who, if you remember, last year, we had, town meeting had basically authorized to stay for a two-year period with Nishoba, so that is through fiscal year 2025, that's the commitment we made to them, we are funding in the budget for Nishoba. With that said, on March 11th, our new health director started, and we've already met with the representative from the Nishoba Boards of Health and with our new health director, talking about a plan moving forward, so they're going to be working cooperatively over the course of the next year, in terms of getting the appropriate understanding of the town and understanding what their needs are, and working cooperatively over the course of the next year to make that happen. I would note, we're not, we didn't make any presumptions in turn, in terms of additional revenue that we're bringing in just yet, we really want to sort of keep the proverbial training wheels on our new director of health, while he has good experience, this is a new position for us, and want to give this the chance to be successful.
Well, that's probably built the year, the 12-month buffer, so we'll be in good shape, 15 months.
Yeah, with additional months here, so, but to be able to do this, we have to be able to ask or basically request of town meeting to extract ourselves from the Nishoba Boards of Health at the end of this time.
So the Nishoba Boards of Health also provided the nursing services that we didn't cover.
We talked about that, that's another, so we have a separate line item in the budget for nursing, and we'd ask whether or not maybe potentially we could stay with them. So one of the, one of the tasks that I gave to our new director of public health is to determine, what do we want to do with the, how do we want to plan forward for the nurse? So I think with the monies that were freed up, we'll be able to reallocate those, and shouldn't, hopefully wouldn't be more costs, but we do need a plan on that, Mark, you're right.
We also need a plan if our director decides to quit on June 13th of 2025.
Well, that's, that's, the other part of that is, in understanding that this is a new model, part of the, that, to that very point, is to say to him, we need to start developing relationships with, you know, health directors in other neighboring communities, talk about backing up, even if someone goes on vacation for a couple weeks or what have you, you know, that backup should be there so that we don't lose any continuity of service. So part of that's going to have to be, you know, a plan for nursing, a plan for backup, and figuring out what we, what we need to do if this individual were to, to move on as well, so, no, it's all, and we've explained that to the new individual, and I think he's, he's beginning to second build those foundations to prepare us moving forward.
Yeah, that has to be absolute, that, we can't, you know, not just discussion, we have to have a backup somehow, some way.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if this article's a year previous.
We can always beg and plead next year, we're a year out. We don't have to, we actually don't have to have this article this town meeting, they're asking us to so that they can plan for personnel and things like that.
Yeah, basically, right.
We theoretically come back, we'll say, please take us back, our, our things, our, our idea failed or whatever, but I don't expect that, I'd rather go the route of having a backup town, whoever else is getting bloodied through the gate, because this is something that's, a lot of the communities around us are in the consortium with Nishoba, so this is going to be...
Yeah, I would just rather have the backup in place before we decide that we're going to tell them what we're doing. That's just, it's worth you $50,000 in 2025, just to know that we have a place.
We can help in that regard, I mean, I don't mind reaching out to them.
And remember too, this is, so they're, and they're also budgeted for FY '25, the Boards of Health, so they'll still be here, there are services we're paying for, and some of our backup will be, you know, would be them, but at the same time, we want to develop other relationships that, you know, prepare us for FY '26.
My understanding was the conversation when we had with the Board of Health was before us last year, was that we begged Nishoba to get back in, and they said, this is it, don't come back again.
Yeah.
So we were done, '25 was it.
They vote, they're, it's, I mean, there's 13 or 14 communities, and they each vote, they have a vote on whether they take us back in or not, so, I mean, when they say this is it, who, it's probably one person saying that.
No, actually, having groveled sufficiently on your behalf, I will tell you that that was, that was the whole group, Steve's right, I mean, it was...
Well, we'll get in if we have to.
Yeah, and you can imagine too, because these are people who are committed to, to the, to Nishoba, have been part of this group for years, so for us, this has sort of been playing, you know, playing with their affection, if you will, they didn't take it too well.
They're not, they're not hurting.
I think they basically, only reason they let us stay was to say, was really more out of the lines of like, well, we don't want public health to suffer in Littleton in the meantime, so.
Well, that would still be the case a year from now.
I, I think so, if not worse, so, if not worse, so that's, that's why it's here, so, okay. Moving along, we start to get into the citizen petition components of, of the warrant. Article 30 is citizen petition from the standards in the back of the room, this is related to, this is related to making sure that we have, I think it's charcoal filters in all marijuana establishments. We've asked town council to review, we have three citizen petition articles, and we're asking town council to review all of them and get back to us with their perspective on that. Keep in mind that it is our responsibility to put forth the... Keep in mind that it is our responsibility to put forth the citizen petition articles as written, so that's what's in here. So, Article 30 is about the charcoal filters. Article 31, also from Mr. Sanders, is related to posting agendas as public meetings, as public hearings, so if there are any questions about a project update that the public will be able to ask questions at that time.
What kind of projects would these be?
Yeah, I think.
The major projects are all posting.
I think we can, I think we'd be able, they are, but I think we can actually fix this by always having our discussions on these type of things before public comment, and then at public comment, we can speak back to it. I mean, that's another way to deal with it. Right now, we have a lot of business that takes place after public comment, and everybody just kind of, they want to say something, but they can't, so maybe we just really look at that a little different on how we set the agenda up, so that we've actually set everything, and then now that public comment can speak.
But then you run into the situation where public comments at 11 o'clock at night.
No, yeah.
I think it used to be that way.
But this will, this will extend meetings regardless, because it'll interrupt the flow of a meeting, so at every point.
Yeah, no, I don't necessarily.
So, we have to, I'm trying to find a way to at least address it where we're.
And it also applies to more than just the select board.
Well, you could have a public comment session at the end of the presentation.
Yeah.
Not allow it during, I mean, if you wanted to just get the presentation out and then public, you know, right then and not at the end of, not at the end of the select board meeting, an hour later, a half hour later, right at, you know, during that discussion, but it could become at the end rather than disrupting the flow of the discussion.
And I'd like some clarification on what project, you know, what's, what project, what falls under the notion of a project?
Well, it could be any, we're talking about our five big projects going on in town, you know, the sewer, we're talking about Indian Hill, we're talking, no, I'm just saying it could, as far as the article's written, you're right, it could be any project.
But we can't, we can't change this article, so why are we debating it here now? Like, I'm with you, but then again, this is where, this is how it's going to be in the warrant, so, like, let's talk to Mr. Sanders and work out a way to qualify this, maybe for the next one, but.
Okay, yeah, I want to meet offline with Mr. Sanders on this one thing.
Right, this is just the first time we've seen this, so I've just got a question, and just, by the way, FinCom's not going to vote on this.
Well, yeah, it's not a finance article, yeah, so you don't, yeah, so it's really just.
And that's, and this is, yeah, this is new, I don't think I talked about, it's because it came in after, I think, the past week, so.
Oh, I see, it's a cross off.
Yeah, yeah. So, Article 32, another, our final citizen petition, and this is a vote to petition the state legislature to grant non-citizen permanent residence in the town the ability to vote in all town meetings, elections, and actions, and serve as an elected Littleton municipal official. Because I understand that there are a few of these requests before the legislature already, so this would be, you know, this would be Littleton's attempt at that, but I don't know whether or not any have actually been approved of yet.
So, they're allowing the towns to do this without the state doing it first?
Well, it's the towns would be petitioning the state to allow the towns to do.
But then the state would have to pass a law that all towns could do.
No, no. It's a local petition.
Really?
Yeah.
Interesting.
Right, so that's the, yeah, so there's our final.
After spending so much time in Hawaii, you can still vote now.
Okay, we're rounding the bend here, everyone, so we've got three planning board articles. So, first, Article 33, this is to amend the registered marijuana dispensaries and adult-use marijuana bylaws, so I do have Maureen and the planning board chair, Mr. Monari, here, if anybody wants to speak to any of the planning board articles, if you have any questions. Right now, we don't have, I think it's sort of one of these situations where the planning, where the planning board's still working to finalize what some of that language would be, but if we can at least share with you what the intent is and we want to bring it forward, we can do that, so.
How, what does this have to do with marijuana?
Good evening, our district health town planner. The planning board is considering a process to reduce the number of cultivation facilities that would be allowed in town. Right now, it's an unlimited number. The proposed bylaw would reduce that number either to four, which is one of each of the four types of marijuana grow facilities under the state law. If the town wants to go below four, then it would take both a town meeting vote and follow-up ballot vote, so we're just opening.
Okay, so this is the wrong description of this article.
Yeah, it is the wrong description of the article. That was dropped in.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So.
So, that description is the town's MBTA community.
Oh, the MBTA, oh, okay, there you go, well, there you say.
It's not dispensaries either.
Well, medical dispensary is the title, one of the old state titles for.
For a grow facility?
For a medical facility, yeah.
The grows.
Yeah, registered medical dispensary was the old title for medical grow facility.
But for clarity, the, getting rid of this description, it's, the intent is just to reduce the number of the growth facilities.
Correct, that's the discussion I heard.
If we have clarity on if we do, if we reduce it to just two, we have to do the second, the vote, do we have to, what's the timeline, do those have to be done, how far can they be separated?
Yeah, that question is still open to town council, but the discussion was, if you have the vote at this town meeting, then the local ballot could be, hopefully, at the November elections.
I'm going to ask, I want to throw this question out there, why, just, why is your article being presented? What was our, planning boards, in the back of your minds, why restrict?
Yeah.
Is it opposed to zoning an area potentially that wouldn't have any?
Mostly the concerns that have been raised with existing grow facilities that.
Right, which we know which one it is, because of the location, but why wouldn't we just think about zoning in a different area as opposed to restricting a, I mean, taxpaying resource, that's all, that's all I'm thinking.
Can I ask who was the progenitor of the idea to introduce a marijuana treatment center to Littleton and to restrict the grower to one? The grower of a big canopy of cannabis to one?
Who's idea was it? Planning board's idea?
No, we had residents who came to the planning board and asked us to.
Oh, that's true, that's true. When one of the public hearings was open for one of the manufacturing facilities, the request came in to please consider a reduction of the number of grow facilities at the town.
That was the one where we approved the second distribution, second store, they also wanted to grow it there, and that's when the residents came up and asked whether they wanted it as well.
That's true.
And asked us to put a restriction on any of the grow facilities.
I, just, it's kind of, it becomes almost a null subject if Mr. Sanders' article actually passes with charcoal filters and now placing a restriction, because I'm assuming that the whole entire reasoning is because of smell. Is that fair to say what came out of those hearings?
The planning board has not yet held a public hearing on it, there's been the input we have in draft from town council.
I'm just thinking by all accounts, that's the only thing that I've been presented with, I don't know what their board members made it present with something else, but it's been the smell, it hasn't been traffic, it hasn't been any other issues, it's just been.
Right, and having it on the town meeting warrant and having the planning board hold a public hearing on it, that's the opportunity to have a discussion.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Maureen, did town council advise if, about the second option where if you, if we want to reduce it to less than four, it would have to go to ballot, did they advise whether they thought that that would be found acceptable by the state?
Well, it's.
I thought there was some debate during the, during the meeting about whether the state would accept that ballot measure.
I think they, if I respectfully, they would accept it if it went to ballot and not if it was just town meeting.
I got it, okay. Yeah, thanks.
All right, so, yeah, Article 34 is, this is a new one, to amend the King Street Common District. I'll leave that to you and Jim as to address that.
This is, this is really basically, in the event, because we don't have any official, we don't have a written, we don't have a written document in front of us identifying that, from the state, that they would not entertain actually permitting the, moving 150 units by increasing the density at 550 King Street to be able to help alleviate any requirements under the MBTA zoning. There has been very strong discussion of the fact that it would not be done, however, like to be able to, I recommended putting this forward with the caveat in there that if, in the event that it is official word that the 150 units would not be, there would not be any type of relief given to the town by increasing the density, the article is moot point, it goes away.
So, we're still waiting on the letter?
Correct, and having a conversation today with Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, it's coming, the letters, you know, are coming, but they, they do support, they did, they did express today, any increase of the density at 550 King Street, they do support any commitment towards having a shuttle that would run from there to the, to the train station, they would completely support, but anything, anything beyond that, that they did not feel at that point, at the staffing levels that we were discussing with, they did not feel that that was going to be approved. However, it's still apparently being discussed.
Okay.
That's what was left, so, in the event it does, if they do permit it, then the article is saying that 150 can be moved over to 150.
The town can decide.
To 550 King Street, but if we have an absolute no way, then it's just moot point, it goes away.
I think that's consistent with the letter you sent, so, you know, I think it's supported by both the select board and.
Yeah, it's just, we haven't got a response yet, it's kind of.
No, nothing in writing, but there's been plenty of verbal conversations.
Did they? Yeah.
So, if 34 passes and the state agrees to what it is, does 35 go away?
No, it's, no, because the 35 is the article with the MBTA of adopting it, so it's all predicated, it's all predicated upon in the event that, so there are two things that have to happen. In the event that the town adopts the MBTA article, the, the point goes away, the article, the previous article would just be, would just go away. In the event that the, we get in writing saying, your waiver is denied, yes, we do support the shuttle, but that does not preclude you from maintaining, from the 150 units within the half mile, goes away.
But are you saying that they might say we don't have to do the 150?
That was the intent, okay, all right.
So, what the planning board got was a request from the developer of 550 King Street to consider this article, so the process to consider it is asked for, for the planning board to ask for it on the town meeting warrant and to hold a public hearing on it. They can open a hearing as early as April 18th on it, and that'll allow, again, for a little more discussion.
It's a great idea, gives planning board more flexibility to ballot the train station instead of being handcuffed by the MBTA.
Well, perhaps, perhaps. Right. Just adds, unfortunately, unfortunately adds that much more complexity to the difficult discussions of rezoning near the commuter rail station.
So, we would still have to rezone near the commuter rail station even if we got permission from the state to count the 150 units?
Any zoning bylaw needs to go, after approval by, by a town meeting, needs to go to both the attorney general's office and MBTA communities would have to go to HLC. HLC is saying somehow a magic wand and they're approving something that's.
Variances or whatever.
A waiver.
Waiver, variance.
So, it depends on what that letter says.
I don't, I don't understand.
So, 34 says we're zoning, we're going to try and add 150 units at 550.
Increase the dens, increase the, increase the, amend the existing special permit by increasing.
Not the special permit, the existing, the zoning bylaw.
The zoning bylaw, I have, thank you.
In general, or in, or to satisfy the MBTA communities?
There has to be to satisfy the MBTA.
So, if it's to satisfy the MBTA communities, 35 says we're going to pick one of the, let's just say we're picking one of the parcels down at Foster Street, and we're going to zone it, so why would, if 34 passes, we don't need 35.
Well, one is going to be, could be eliminated.
The state has to.
We don't know yet.
Right.
Right, and, and I would argue that we don't know that answer until after we go through HLC approval before December 31st.
But then is, so then is 35 revoked?
Yeah, why does 35 go away?
So, I don't.
Then why?
Isn't the point of 34 to lessen the density of 35? You're going to add it.
To remove 35.
To eliminate the need for 35, I would have thought.
It was to remove 35, I thought.
No, I was looking at the presentation today, all the different combinations, I thought if we, if we increase the density at 550 King, it allowed, it allowed us to lessen the density by the MBTA because we combined both?
Right, except not increase the density of 550 to account for other adjacent parcels, the current zoning, to expand 550 King Street.
Yeah, but you're still going to add 150 units.
No, the, our zoning is already in place to allow that number of units across the expanded 550.
We're just going to count those units as MBTA units.
Yeah.
But if we do that, what I'm, I still don't know the answer to this, are we then going to zone something for the MBTA near the train station?
My recommendation is to zone something near the MBTA station.
So, okay, so we're not giving 550 King Street additional units, we're just trying to belt and suspenders, two ways to get to.
We're doing both.
Well, yeah, but.
We're giving 550 additional units and.
No, we're not giving 550 additional units.
You have to do them both.
Wait, 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 hold on, we need to answer one question at a time. Are we giving 550 additional units?
Yes.
Okay, so then, why? If we, if we, why do we have to do both? Because now we're at 300 units instead of 150.
Because the governor is going to have to decide whether they accept the 150 units at 550 King Street. If they do, then the second one goes away.
To satisfy the MBTA.
It satisfies the governor, but you won't know that until you vote in a town meeting, and the attorney general's got to approve it, then the governor's going to have to approve it, so you have to have them both in place.
Right, but if we don't, but if the governor doesn't, does not approve the 550 King Street, we have given Sal Lapoletta an additional 150 units.
No, if the governor doesn't approve, it goes away.
It's conditional, it's conditional. We can lay which definitely have lay which, I know where you're going.
That's fine.
I want to settle a way which in that it's.
But the flipper from what Matthew was saying, if the governor does approve, and we've already rezoned something on Foster.
Then that goes away.
How does that go away?
We have to say that we'll have to have it, you know what?
It could go away, it doesn't just go away.
It's not automatic.
Could town meeting have to make it go away?
We're going to have to make it go away, but we've been asked to do both of them, which were muddy in the waters, absolutely, muddy in the waters by putting the second, the first one in. Our original intention was just to do the rezon down at Foster Street. We've been told that the governor may consider the letters that have been sent if there's a formal vote on, so that's what we're trying to do. How are we going to address it? We still don't know how we're going to address it at town meeting, but they both there and they both have to stay there, and one goes away if one's approved.
The problem, I think, that's going to happen at town meeting, because you can absolutely see this, you know where I'm going.
Yep.
The town meeting will say, hey, 34 might happen, so let's not vote 35, so town meeting will either vote 35 down or vote to table it, which is probably the worst thing, because then they're going to say, oh, but we could handle it in the fall, it's like, no, there's no time there. So, I think this is. So I think this is, well, I think this is setting us up for a failure on town meeting four.
I think the planning board would rather whichever the 150 is, would go away. But we've been asked to put it on.
I mean, there's no Finkham recommendation on this.
No, no.
So one of the questions that I have is, again, from a timing standpoint, we already know how challenging it is to get a, an item through town meeting, especially when it's complicated, one where all folks aren't on board. So I would just ask this group if we could perhaps consider, if it's not at fall town meeting, could we proceed with 34 at spring town meeting and keep working on 35, presuming, assuming we'll need to do it and plan for a special town meeting so that we can continue to get it done by the end of the summer?
I'd rather do it the other way around.
I think I'd rather do it the other way. The zoning down at Taylor Street, Foster Street, we have to do that one first. That's our belt and suspenders. We need to get it done.
We don't satisfy the state.
We don't have to do anything. We've zoned it, right? We don't have to do anything. Come the end of the year, we'll have another, we'll have a better idea whether they're going to give us any flexibilities there.
And if we do decide to then add to 550 King Street, we can make that addition contingent upon rescinding the zoning on Foster.
It's going to increase the density.
But they said they won't approve, they would not approve a 34 scheme unless 34 is voted on. So.
This is going to be a tough one either way.
We're sort of giving up on 34 if we don't vote it at this meeting.
It's going to be difficult to explain this to everybody at town.
Yes.
I would say impossible.
I mean, I understand the ideas, you know, sold if they said you could put 150 down. 150 more units down.
It's unfortunate that you can't get an answer from the governor's office that yes, that we can get the affirmation if we did vote it. Because we can't tell him that. He's told us that.
So if 35 goes through, that's the Foster Street one, okay? And 550 King also passes, and we say, oh, good, now we can rescind 35. If a developer came in with plans before town meeting, we send it in, we have to honor those plans.
Right, with zoning, definitive subdivision increases the zoning for eight years.
Eight years.
So one of the things that I had heard from member Rambacher, we all, he and Bartlet and I attended the CPTC training like 10 days ago. And didn't you say that in there, there was a guy from HLC who said that we could submit information and get a response back within 90 days?
Yes.
Could you explain that?
So we can submit our sample bylaw to the state and our sample zoning to the state, and they commit that within 90 days they will get back to you and tell you if anything needs to change from the EO HLC perspective, right? So if we were to submit some plan for something down by Foster Street, they will tell us in 90 days whether it passes their requirements or not. They look at more than just the zoning for that specific thing. They look at all your other zoning laws to make sure there's nothing that conflicts with what they're requiring. That's why it takes the whole 90 days into June. So I, personally, I think we should table 35 and have a meeting in September and say, by June 1st, we're going to know exactly what we want down there. We submitted to the state, we get an answer back by September 1st, and we're ready to go to town meeting saying, this is exactly what, we know the state will approve this, right? And if you wanted to do that with 34, we could do it. But that's putting a lot more, that's a lot riskier, I think, because I don't think the state's going to approve 34.
And I think Brian's right. There's no way, based on the conversation we've had tonight, there's no way that this is going to pass town meeting.
We just assume you, well, we would rather not see that on the warrant.
So who, who is asking you to put it on the warrant?
Your office.
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, I think 34 is such a long shot. I think, I think the, it's such a long shot that the damage it will absolutely do at town meeting is not worth the very low percentages that the governor said. Yes, I'd say take 34 off.
Well, that's tough.
It's up to you guys. You ask us to put it on.
Well, again, from a timing standpoint, or what Ms. Morrison said, so if they, they, the state expects us to get it approved at town meeting. So let's say for argument's sake, we take 34 to spring town meeting, it gets passed, and again, then we can still continue doing what Mr. Rambacher said by filing with HLC our proposed other plan for Foster Street. And if we never hear back from the governor's office or it's not approved, we still have that Plan B that we can get done and hear back from by the end of the summer and get it approved and either have a special town meeting or September, or we take it to fall town meeting knowing that it has already been given a sample of approval before.
But I could just hear someone saying, hey, we already gave 150 units to South.
I know, I know.
You know? It's just optically, I understand all the connections. I understand all of the, like, things that are colliding here to make this an impossible situation. But optically, on the floor of town meeting, this is an untenable situation, and nothing good will come of it.
That's why we should stay with 34 and move forward.
I disagree that it's impossible. I mean, I think, I think if, I think if it were, I mean, I think if it were packaged in terms of, with the sequence that Ms. Houston is talking about, you know, the way that we would, I mean, the thing that appeals to me about 34 is that we don't have to do anything over at Foster if we get it approved. We can't get this approved unless we pass it. So if folks, you know, I think this is our due diligence of trying everything we can before we move forward with developing near the train station, which I think a lot of folks tend to think of as less desirable than developing where we're already developing. I don't think it's impossible.
We are developing the transition in one way or another.
And we all trust the state not to say, okay, you've approved 300, build 300.
That's a whole other problem.
Well, that's why I think.
Why do anything if we can't trust the state? Right, I mean, why are we here?
But the zoning's approved already. Again, I don't have to build it, just zoning allows for it.
I don't think you can bring both 34 and 35.
I agree with that.
If you bring 34, then you can do 35 in September still and work on an alternate plan.
But what if we get, but what if we get confirmation? Because as part of the communication today with the state, it is.
If we got confirmation on 34, then we can drop the work on 35.
If we get confirmation in terms of denial on 30, it goes away on itself. So we pull it on the floor. But what happens if we, if we get confirmation a week before town meeting?
Then do we pull 35?
No, 35 is still there.
Yeah.
Right, 34, you just pull it on the floor and say, we've got denial, and the language in the article turns around and says, in the event it gets denied, it's.
So we would have to, we would meet and we would pull the article on the floor.
My personal preference is to do 35 at a one article town meeting in September. As this currently stands with, we're up to 38 articles. We just added two more, or maybe 37, because there was one that was deleted. This is going to be a two-day town meeting anyway. So let's move one of the controversial articles. We have the Webster property, that's one controversial thing that's going to take a long time. Move this one to its own meeting. Give the state their 90 days to vet whatever plan we come up with and say that it's okay. And then we go to town meeting and say, this is the plan that the state approved, voted up or down. You're not allowing any amendments to it. We know the state will approve it. We can go to town meeting with that, and it'll be much simpler to get through town meeting.
The, the scope of the article in regard, and the project was reviewed today in terms of talking about the project. And it was received very, very well.
Which pro, 550?
Five, no, no, on the article about the zoning article, the MBTA zoning article. So they were very happy to see that that was going forward.
35.
35.
HLC was very happy to see the article.
HLC wants to see 35 go forward.
Yes, right. And because part of the conversation is the positive, which happened, which happened here in this room, the workshop. And it was, it was, it was expressed by both Town Council and Maureen and myself on how positive it was. There were people that weren't talking before that are now talking, and majority of which got, there was a general consensus going around on different, on different scenarios. There was, of course, there was a couple people that it's not going to satisfy, but that's fine. But ultimately, and that was very, that was very assuring, that made them feel better and said, great, fantastic. And so moving forward, so.
The problem with 34 is you haven't even been able to get an answer on the letters that we put in. So why are we, why are we throwing all our eggs in that basket hoping? We have to have 35. It's a question of whether, maybe we keep them on until the very end.
That's what I'm thinking. If we don't do anything with these two articles, we keep them here until.
And try to get an answer from the governor.
If something happens over the next month, we.
I think actually even keeping them adds to confusion.
We could, you're right, in the book.
Well, I think we need to think about pulling it, pulling 34 before town meeting, because it's just going to get too confusing.
I would say if you're pulling it, you have to pull it before it's printed. Once it's printed in the book, people are going to see these two things, and then it's just going to make it, yeah.
And the downside, and I'll say, I know, Finkham, not you guys, but if we, if we mess this up, we lose our grant. So that lets, that lets Finkham.
Yeah, we're not going to, that's not going to happen. We're not going to let that happen, but we won't.
Right, and the way we don't let.
Unless the town will it, I mean, but that would be.
Right, but the way we don't let that happen, I think, is being smart about this. I'm, I'm, I think I would, both you, get 34 off. It's, you're rolling the dice with big downside with very little chance of success.
I'm going to, we'll talk, we'll talk more about it. Yeah, I want to hear it, George. I know you've been sitting there. Go ahead, Mr. Sanders. Mark. Okay.
George Sanders, 672 Great Wood. Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, we're sending a bad message here tonight. We had this public meeting and the residents, and we talked to the people, and they came up with the idea that, okay, we're probably going to do two locations down there off of Foster Street. My main concern is this, I'm a realist. The state has in place right now what they're telling us that we need to do. They also agreed to let you piggyback off of 550 with the other 80% of the 750 units, which is 600 units. Now, we should be thankful for that, because we don't have to build those 600 units somewhere else and live them. Number two, the state is talking, but they're not writing and signing. So what's the smart thing to do? The smart thing to do is to comply with the law. The law says you need to put 20% down there. Put before the people in the town the 20%. And if you want to send a letter off and ask them about 550 up here, you got time to do that and bring it before the November town meeting. And what you can tell the people is that if they accept it, then we'll just go back and cancel this out about Foster Street. That's the smart thing and the intelligent thing to do, in my opinion. Thank you.
All right, before we continue, is the fire chief still here, deputy?
No, I see he's outside.
I wanted to, I apologize. He's, he works a crazy schedule, and he's been in here. He's got a two-minute thing we have to do with him. And that's just, we're going to temporarily promote. See you. No, all right, we'll just, we'll continue. If he comes back in, I'll try to. No, it's.
Joe, for the steps.
Just a, thank you, deputy. I realize we were about a half hour past your time, so I wanted to make sure we get this done where it's such an easy. Yeah, you can come up if you'd like. So we met in executive session, we discussed, still in contract negotiations with our hopefully chief-to-be. And with the expectation that that start date will be June 1st. So we were going to, in discussions with Deputy Coffey, we're going to temporarily promote him for 60 days until that new chief comes on board, with Chief Clancy leaving the end of the week. And so, and then Deputy would fill that position for two months. So that's where we're at. So as an interim, excuse me. So, and you have anything you wanted to add? I mean, we, I know we discussed.
Not really. Just looking forward to it. Chief's departing this Friday. Everyone's invited, public included, 9:30 to 11:30. We're going to give him a proper send-off.
At 9:30 in the morning?
Yep.
5 o'clock somewhere.
All right, any discussion, more discussion on this? Thank you.
Move the Select Board appoint Deputy Fire Chief Sean Coffey as interim fire chief for the period April 1st, 2024 through May 31st, 2024.
Second.
Moved by Mark Seaway-Bathy, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Do me a miss, thank you. Now go to some sleep.
Thank you very much. Thanks, deputy.
All right, back to business.
Okay, so in terms of the Articles 34 and 35, do we have, these are planning board articles, so. The planning board placed them forward, so we just put them on. So I don't know how we'd like to proceed.
Well, I want to get through the financial articles. Are there any more financial articles?
The only other, the last article we have is Article 36, which is if we need it, and this would be a motion at the floor of town meeting, and that would be transfers in my line items in the FY '24 budget. So last year we had it, it didn't, but there've been a few other things happening. It may necessitate this year, but just there as a placeholder. So that's the, that's the entire warrant.
All right, what do you need from the Finance Committee?
So I think the Finance Committee, there are a few new articles that, I, my understanding is the Finance Committee is supportive of all of the articles that are not highlighted here. So Steve, maybe if you wanted to go through the ones that are in blue?
I think hold on the blue.
So you're going to, for grant, in two weeks, is that?
Two weeks, yeah.
And the warrant closes, so you guys are putting.
Tonight the warrant closes.
Tonight, basically.
Yeah.
Everything.
That's the plan.
So is the plan for the next meeting, maybe, to maybe get recommendations until we see better language for all the articles?
Like. Well, I mean, most of the, I mean, a lot, most of the articles, I think, were in fairly, fairly good shape. I was hoping to get the recommendations tonight. I mean, obviously, the planning board ones are, you know, I think the Finance Committee would be providing recommendations to the planning board anyway. Typically, the.
Correct.
So, and typically, the Select Board doesn't opine on those articles. So I think for the most part, you know, I think, taking the spirit of the meeting we had on last Tuesday, Steve, I think, my understanding is that the, you know, the Finance Committee is supportive of most of those articles, but.
So how about if we?
Do you want to meet jointly again, was your thing?
We need to meet jointly in two weeks, or we can meet separately and give our recommendations on Tuesday?
Yeah.
It would be better that you meet before us, so we could take your recommendation. Right?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the language may not change.
Tuesday, Tuesday night? Is that good?
Next Tuesday.
Not tomorrow.
Not tomorrow, yeah.
This is a flood of information that comes.
That's a good question.
A week's worth of language.
Yeah, I think a week of improved language.
We'll get you. You don't have to come. We can take care of it.
Mr. Chairman, could I? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, and just as long as we have the chair of the planning board and a planning here, and I'm just trying to think this through a little bit. We don't have words, and going back to Articles 34 and 35.
We'll get, I want to get to that, Jim. I'm just thinking the finest, but I don't want to keep them here if you guys don't want to.
Again, normally, we wouldn't opine on planning board, or on a planning article, but since the downside of getting it wrong is so catastrophic with grants.
Hey, mate, you guys can choose to vote on it. Hey, mate, you guys can choose to vote on it, absolutely.
I think we should vote on it.
That's up to your board.
That's Tuesday.
I mean, you're going to vote on Tuesday all the articles.
Need to see the language anyways, if we vote on something, you know, see the language.
Sure. Have the language, right?
Sure, but, but this is, this is something that could have.
Huge.
Catastrophic effect on budgety things, so I think we should say something.
Budget.
Can, can I go to the Wayback Machine and ask something on Article 5? We originally said we were going to wait till the end and then print.
Right.
Flew that all up, so.
It's a job, right?
Article 5, there's betterment collections for the water department of 73, $950. Those are, what are those betterment collections? Because I thought, those aren't sewer betterment collections, are they?
No, it's water.
Because they're sewer betterment somewhere else. I, I just didn't know why they went from zero to something.
To 73,000, right.
Yeah, but they were zero the previous budget, so.
That's right, that's right.
I didn't know.
I think it has to do with the boxcar lines, maybe? I think it has to do with the boxcar.
But they couldn't be collecting boxcar money because that hasn't been, there's nothing appropriate, there's no.
The only betterments that I can remember the water department collecting recently are way back when they did Manawannaki. I mean, that's years and years ago.
So, I, I just want to know.
This is for next year's.
I don't know why it's all of a sudden coming up. I haven't heard anything.
She's, she's your.
Can we find that out?
Well, no, this is for, for next year's collections.
No, they're, they're just using part of their betterments in the budget. That's all I'd say. It's not that they're collecting it, they're using it.
So they're saying they're going to have 73,950 collected and then they're going to use it next year?
They have revenue coming in of betterments.
Yeah, that just means they're collecting.
Right, so, just like the sewer department, if you go to the sewer budget.
Yeah.
For example, they have 200,000 sitting there. They're collecting more than 200,000. They're using 200,000. So that's in their budget to use as a revenue source to spend. Doesn't mean that's all that they're collecting. And I think the water department, their collections for betterments are done.
Yeah. I, I. I, I can ask the question, Mark.
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
I really don't know what betterments they would be, new betterments that they would be collecting right now.
In fiscal '25.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
It just shows it as revenue.
So it's all stuff that's there.
But it could, it could be something.
It's revenue that they're, it's, it's monies that they're using, so they have to show it as a revenue. Doesn't mean that it's coming in that year.
But it could be.
It's available to be used. It could be, yes.
All right, we'll get an answer to that before.
Question.
Before you have to vote on it.
Yeah, we do have Nick's schedule to come on the 9th, though. Are we not going to meet on the 9th, if we're meeting next Tuesday?
The 9th, maybe 2nd.
We probably just already had Nick's schedule itself to change it. Do you want him to see if he can come the 1st?
You done with us?
Yeah, it, yeah, I think we've got.
He's good.
Thanks, you're on business. More to come.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't write this down, thank you.
But it, oh, Mr. Houston, do you have a question? We had all public input yet, unless this is.
Oh, this is still on that 34, 35. We just have one suggestion.
When we, when we start to opine it a little bit more, we'll, uh.
What do you opine?
I'll let you come up when, when we do it. I wanted, I wanted to get to conservation, because I, I apologize, Tim, for you being in the room, or for not seeing you in the room, not for you being in the room. Tree City USA proclamation request of Arbor Day 2023 and 2024. I want to take this out of order, just so we can get this, get you home as well. Sure. Thank you, guys.
You have anything? Oh, good. Tim Pearson, Assistant Conservation Agent, here seeking proclamation for Arbor Day 2023, as well as Arbor Day 2024, those dates being April 28th, 2023, and April 26th, 2024. I'm seeking this proclamation, because I'm going through the process of getting Littleton recertified or re-recognized by Tree City USA. As a Tree City USA town, we originally got recognized in 2022, so this would get us recognized through 2023 and give us a head start on 2024. This recognition comes with Arbor Day Foundation grant opportunities, as well as positions Littleton as a good place to live, showing that we care about the environment. Last year, both, I think it was the shade tree committee, as well as the water department, held an event on Arbor Day, a tree planting event. I believe they plan on holding that again this year. You don't need to read the whole proclamation, it's a little lengthy, but if you can read from the second paragraph down, and then if I can get the chair's signature, that would be sufficient.
So, just out of curiosity, if Arbor Day's every year?
Yeah.
Why are we just proclaiming this?
It's perpetuated.
It's a different day, it's on a, a different date.
Yeah, but we could, on Arbor Day, we proclaim.
It's, it's part of the requirement for the, the application that Tree USA.
I assume every year we'll do this proclamation?
Yeah, and, and that's why I was trying to combine last year, because the deadline was supposed to be at the end of last year, but they, they, it was brought to my attention recently that they extended it, and I was like, oh, I didn't know we were still eligible, so kind of getting a, a retroactive.
So you forgot to mention the big plaque that we got, too.
Upstairs on the third floor, I just saw it, actually, maybe two weeks ago.
All right, so.
Maybe we can get two more of those.
We do have the motion here, it's real, it's real short.
Okay.
So we don't have to get into, but I just want to recognize that the proclamation, we'll probably have it posted, it's obviously in our packet, too, but a lot of whereas in this proclamation, but it discusses Arbor Day observed throughout the country, what the, what trees do, how they increase property values, economic vitality of businesses, renewables resource, giving us paper, trees can be a solution for combating climate change, goes on and on. So I advise everybody to read it, and, because there's a lot here, what we're actually proclaiming, and this little motion doesn't really encompass everything that's, what this means to us, so.
But I don't want to read all of that.
No, I know you don't, that's why I'm trying to spare you. So please, without further discussion, if we have a motion for that.
Move the Select Board read and sign the proclamation declaring Friday, April 28th, 2023, and Friday, April 26th, 2024, Arbor Day in the town of Littleton.
Second.
Moved by Mark, so by Matthew, all is in favor?
Aye.
All right, I have signed it, so.
Perfect.
This is good. Thank you for.
Should I grab it now, or later this week?
Excuse me.
Thank you very much.
I think you should have read it. Do you? Just saying, it's proclamation.
You want me to read it?
No.
I'm going to read it.
Yep. He's, he's the guy on my shoulder, saying you're going to read it.
No, let's read proclamations, I mean, anytime we get a proclamation, we read it.
Good.
Don't get feel bad, though.
I just did. I just read it. It's before I pass it to Mark.
Okay, back to business, so.
We're back to warrant.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you, Tim.
So, I think the things that we'd be looking at, you know, would be things about the order of the articles, vote to close the warrant, and, and then also vote to approve and sign of the warrant for posting per the amendments we talked about tonight, which included a calling, culling out a few additional articles. We're going to answer Mark's question about Board of Water Commissioners. We are, you know, a few other things we talked about, changing the transfer from the special injury leave indemnity fund down from 155,000 to 125,000. We're going to change some of the language on the senior center project articles, so that probably be, is going to be the entire 1.5 million. And, let's see, some language changes on Indian Hill. Break out two more articles for the CPC, which is potential to purchase the Webster property, and the blended funds transfer, and I think with those changes, we should be okay. I think we just still have the open question about what the board wanted to do, if anything regarding Articles 34 and 35.
So, we need, I, I think we can probably discuss 34 and 35, get that ironed out probably tonight. Over everything else, I think we're fairly, we understand, maybe the, the order I want to discuss a little bit, too.
That's right.
Because that's always a, that's a point of contention every meeting.
Yes, it can be.
So let's try to help fix that. But I do want to hear from, Rob, I know you want to talk about, since we're going to be talking about the subject, 34, 35?
I just have an idea.
Sure.
Rob Houston, 55 Jennifer Street.
My idea stems from Mark's statement that the state is giving us a path of a 90-day window to submit a proposal to them for approval. It works, is what you said, right? They will come back and say yes or no. This works, or this doesn't work, and why? Why don't we use that path, the 90-day path, for Article 34, King Street idea? That's the way that you get them, the state, to say yea or nay, which is what they haven't been doing or willing to do. Give them the plan, submit it to them for approval. If they approve it, you can bring it back in, in the fall. If they don't approve it, no harm, no foul. That would be my idea. Use that process for the 550 King Street plan. That was all I had.
Okay, thank you.
So, can I ask a question about 34? So you, you put that, you put it on the warrant because, and, and I heard, well, someone saying that you thought it would, someone said we need to have it on the warrant, the, you know, the governor needs to see that we have voted on it before they will make a decision. Am I misunderstanding that? Because I'm, I'm trying to figure out what the impetus for putting it on the warrant is now.
In the, in the, in the event, in the event that there may be, because there is, there is so much, there is so much, there are so many issues going on legally in regards to communities that have not been conforming, Attorney General, lawsuits back and forth and everything, in the event that, and, God bless you. Bless you. In the event that the ideology may shift a little bit, I would just want us just to give that, give us, have that flexibility to increase the, the number of units at 550 King Street, if we're able to, either scenario, either the waiver, or identifying the, the bus stop as a clear assistance to get people to, to the MBTA station. Because we don't have anything in writing yet confirming it one way or the other, in the event, and then there's other stuff that's going on with other communities, as we saw in the Boston Globe, there's a number of different communities that are coming up and saying, we're not going to do it, we're not going to do it, we're not going to do it. And you're looking at, I think, Merrimack, or Merrimack, Mass, or Newberry, West Newberry, because they have a number of different situations that are going on there. I'm just trying to give us, offer us flexibility.
Sure, so, so I guess I don't understa, so why, we, we can do, like, 34 seems like an easy sell, if, if, if EOLHLC or whoever signs off on, yes, you can add density to 550 King Street, we can go back to the town and say, hey, everybody, good news, we add a few units to 550 King Street, we don't have to build down by the station, everyone's going to say huzzah and vote for it. But, but, so, I mean, that seems to me to be the sequence that would give us the best chance of success, is figure out whether or not we're going to have to build down there, negotiate with the governor and get a letter or whatever they say to approve the extra density, or the extra units at 550 King Street, and then we can go to the town and say, hey, we need to rezone this because we are getting away with, with Foster Street down by the train station. So, I guess, I mean, but, but putting it on the warrant now, it, it really does confuse things, and I think people are going to see it as double-dipping, and I think that the fact that this is the third time we've gone to town meeting with an article like this, and it's failed the first two, isn't a good look, you know, for, it just.
This failed the first two? I was only filled, filled once.
Only once? I thought we once, oh, you're right, sorry.
Felt like twice.
It does, did feel like twice.
So if 34 was on the warrant, and if 34 were to pass.
And the governor approved it.
That would incentivize five, the owner at 550 King to encourage the acceptance of that plan.
Right, and when we wrote the letter, Mr. Lepoli's team was very aware of what we were writing.
Yes.
So we, the stands, it, it was very, spoke to the bus stop, spoke to the transportation, the commitment to that, whatever's needed, and then, so it was very clear what the intent was. I haven't done all the scenarios where if, if both of these things happen, does the 150 help us with density on Foster Street? I don't even know. I don't think so, because we're stuck at 20% regardless, unless that changes. So no matter what, in other words, if they both happen.
We've added density.
Yeah, we've added density.
That's bad.
Okay, but, but if we, but if, but if we get approval from the governor, my assumption is that we have satisfied our legal obligation to the MBTA zoning, and we don't have to add a single house down by the train station.
But you permitted it.
Hang on.
Yeah, so.
No, hang on, is that, is that accurate?
Well, it's, it's.
If you did 34 and 35.
The thing is.
What?
We're, we're going to be voting on something down on Foster Street, that, that.
Well, so why? Because if, I thought 34 was removing the need to vote for something.
No, it is for MBTA, but I'm saying, we already know that there's a owner and a developer that wants to change that from industrial to something.
Okay, but.
So I'm just saying, we're.
But that's not.
But we're not doing that.
That's MBT, Article 35 is MBT.
Sure, it is strictly, but I'm just saying, I, I don't want to give that impression either, that nothing's going to happen on Foster Street, it's just going to maintain these huge buildings down there.
No, but.
Nothing's going to happen for the, on Foster Street for MBTA.
MBTA, which.
Yes.
To me, it's, I don't know, but we've got this 150, after attending that meeting, we got this 150 spread out pretty nicely on all those, like, where it doesn't look like it's a.
What, at Foster Street?
Yeah, a massive burden regardless, but anyway, we'll get away from all of that, that's, that's an opinion, everybody's got their own.
Then why don't we pull 34?
But, why don't we pull 34?
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, I, I was committed to doing all we can to give the planning board maximum flexibility on Foster Street, so they're not be, their hands aren't tied on exactly what we have to do down there either, that, you know, they can, they can bring these zoning articles forward and not, and talk more about neighborhoods and what, you know, developers can do for the town and things like that, as opposed to, well, you've got to put 150.
So can, can I ask a technical question? Can you pass something like 34 to add 150 units conditionally on the state? It's a zoning thing. How do you pass zoning things conditionally on something else? Right? That's not, how do you?
Subject to approval by the state?
But the state's not going to, the state's not going to care whether you zoned 150 units.
Right, they want it.
They're going to, they're going to conditionally on the approval that it fits under this. I mean, you can do that.
You're right, you're right, the state is not going to care about that, but, but there is, there is, there's so many things that are up in the air about it being adopted. is, there, there is, there's so many things that are up in the air about it being adopted.
No, I'm, I'm just asking on the technical grounds of, how do you pass conditional zoning? You couldn't pass 34 and 35 and say, "If the state approves 34, 35's not, you can't, and we can't, like, um, someone, like, we can't approve 35 and then assumes something, and then we could approve 35 and then try and rescind it in November, but if someone pulled anything in between, they can't, eight years to build it." So, the zoning things can't really be that conditional, can they, on approval by this other agency of the state?
But it's, but it's condition, it's, it, the conditional part is the fact that the town adopts the zoning. It's not conditional upon-
We've already adopted.
It's, but, but if, not the MBTA zoning, but it's, if, if, if the MBTA zoning is adopted, the 150 units at 550 King Street goes away.
But how?
So-
Okay, so, let's, let's go with that. What is the MBTA zoning at 550 that we would have to adopt? Because there's no article in here about that.
35. That's 35.
35 includes a tweak to zoning at 550 King Street.
But then it was also, but 35 is also zoning at Foster Street, so you can't, so if you pass 35, 34 and 35, then you're going to get 300 units theoretically.
No, then 34, then-
Right, no, 35, it has 550 King Street as part of the MBTA community's district with the existing zoning, one small tweak to the existing zoning. So, there's no increase in density for 550 King Street with 35.
Right. So, if 34 passed, then 30, and, if 34 passed, we get 150 units approved, right?
Increased, yeah.
Increased. If 35 failed, do we still have 150 units increase at 35?
If 35 passes?
If 35 fails, right?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're stuck, now we have 950 units at 550 and still no MBTA thing. We're going to go and have to pass.
But, so this is what I was gonna, I was going to suggest, and I don't know, and I'm glad that we have Maron and the chair, and the, and the assistant chair here of Planning Board. It's, it's, if, if, if the article can be, if Article 34, because we have no written confirmation one way or the other in terms of, for any letters that have been written there. All indications, at, at this point, conversations in regards to what was planned out that was expressed today with that team there, very, very enthusiastic about the different scenarios, everything. There didn't appear to be any like, whoa, oh, no, that's, that, that's, we have an issue with that. Everything was received very, very well. But, we still have to get the voters here to adopt it. So, I was thinking, if there is something that can be said on Article 34, if Article 35 passes, Article 34 goes away. It's subject to. If, but, if there is something that, in the event that Article 35 doesn't pass in May, now where, now Article 35, Article 30, I'm sorry, Article 34 stays in place, but if there is something that can be put on there, because we'll want to go back to town meeting, again, and whether it's the one, one article thing in September, or we go in November, to if more education is needed, if more outreach effort is needed, anything like that. And once that passes, then Article 34 goes away. So, nothing can be, can be, um-
Finalized?
I'm sorry?
Finalized?
Right. Thank you.
He doesn't have the sewer capacity.
Nothing, nothing can be finalized, uh, uh, until basically it expires on 12/31 of this year.
But how do you make zoning expire?
Yeah, but it's, you don't, it's not the, it's, it's, well, okay. I, I don't see it as it, the zoning is expiring. I say the ability to, to increase the units in that zoning expires.
Which is going to happen 10 years from now.
But if he pulled a special, if he amended his special permit on June 1st, add 150 units, the planning board's going to have to approve it, and then you're going to say the state rejected it and they're going to unapprove it? I'm asking, I don't know, I'm, I don't understand the logistics of how this works.
Okay.
I, I'm not opposed to 34, but I don't think you can do 34 and 35 in the same town meeting, period. Right? I think we could push 34, right?
Yeah.
If we, if we, I think we could leave 34 on here and pull it if the state didn't approve it or amend it in such a way that all the 34 did was add 550 and 410, or whatever we decide, to the MBTA. Right? But I don't think you can have 34 and 35 printed together.
Okay.
And I still think 35, we would be much better off doing in September.
All right. So, what, how does the, all right, great point. So, if we, on that line of thinking, if we sit, if we, if we say 34 stays, and that's going to be subject, in the event that a MBTA article passes, it goes away. So, now we go forward in September for that one, to, to your suggestion. We pull 35, and we wait until September. So, how many people are going to stand there and say, "Wait a second. Why we, why do we need to do this? Because we have, we passed back in May that article."
Because we don't need, if, if 34, so here's my suggestion. If we want to go forward with 34 and, with 34, we modify 34 to have the 150 units and add it to the MBTA, that little bit of logic. Right? If the state doesn't get back to us by May 7th, that this is acceptable, 34 is dead. We pull it from town meeting floor, we never vote on it. There's no point in going forward with it if the state didn't approve it already, because now we got 150 extra units there.
I said that, but somebody mentioned that. That's going to be confusing. They're going to get the booklets with it in there.
Yeah. But 35 is not in the booklet at all, right? If, if, if 34 goes through, if the state approves 34 and 34 goes through, then we vote that. In the meantime, the planning board can continue to work on backup plan 35, which is something at Foster Street that we commit to doing in September. Right? And that, they can vet, um, through the state between June and September. Right? And have a one article town meeting.
But if you have $14 million in jeopardy right now, if the town, if the state doesn't see us moving forward, are you comfortable with that $14 million that we haven't got yet if we don't put 35 on? 35 is a safe bet. We know it's going to pass, and we know the governor's going to accept it. I, I'm just throwing that out. It's-
I am very comfortable, I am comfortable going to the governor and saying, "We're going to do this in September."
I, I don't think, I think you're too late by September. This has to be done, vetted, and approved by December. September is too late.
Right. But we already had it vetted by September.
No, we don't. We don't have anything.
That's what I'm saying, is, that should be the goal.
We've had this 90-day discussion. We've been going on. Those letters are over 90 days old, and we still haven't got a straight answer.
Right.
You have to take a safe bet, and the safe bet is to rezone Foster Street.
Then start to whatever 24, 30.
The state has said, if you submit a plan to them, they have 90 days, and they will get back to you within 90 days of that plan.
They haven't done it yet.
But we haven't submitted a plan to them.
We have one back in, back in November, we had it submitted to them. We never got, we never got an answer out of them. We haven't got an answer, we haven't got an answer out of the letters.
The letters aren't the plan, though. The, we, so, so the article that we had at town meeting, we submitted to them?
No.
No, they didn't ask. We never were asked.
So, that's what I'm saying.
We had it on it.
Right. That's not the same thing. So, the state is saying that if you submit the zoning article to them, they will tell you yes or no, or what needs to change, within 90 days. They are doing that. They are committing to that.
We haven't seen it yet, anyway.
But we haven't submitted anything to them.
Correct. And several communities have submitted it, and a lot of the responses are coming back with something that needs to be changed.
Right. If we, if we- So, so, I'm sorry. So, if we submitted it in June, they're going to come back with us for, by September, what needs to be changed, which hopefully is minor, and then we can do that in a town meeting quickly. Right? Or do, the changes are minor enough to do, right, um, between the times?
If we submit 35, and only 35, what are we submitting? What is our plan for the MBTA?
May 7th, right after town meeting.
No, no, no. What, what plan are we submitting?
Okay, it's, it's not a-
Scenario?
You don't submit a plan to HLC. You submit the compliance model, and you submit the-
What are we, what are we presenting to town meeting floor, which-
And, right.
As, well, we'll decide that on the 4th, but right now, it seems like we're going to, we're going to ask for two parcels, the, ask two parcels on Foster Street, which there was consensus, most people agreed with. We're going to submit that at town meeting floor. We're going to, we're going to do that. We're going to get a vote, hopefully an affirmative, and we'll send that to the governor.
Yep. And then we don't, not necessarily going to get built out, but at least we've checked the box, and we've done, and we've already given 750 units.
Muddies the water. I understand, and I understand, Jim, and I think it's a great idea. We should explore all the options we have. But unless we can get a wink and a nod that you're going to get an approval on this, it's not worth jumping off the boat onto 34 when you have 35.
I think we've gotten the opposite of a wink and a nod from different conversations that members of this board have had with under secretaries and directors and deputy directors from that office.
And what are they telling you? No.
It's, there's going to be no waiver granted for anybody, regardless of what you've done in the past. So, the fact that we're still debating 34-
So, we should move on with 35?
I think we should move on with 35. I think that's the, well, you, I think you called it the safe bet, but I think it's the, the best bet. I think it's what's best for the community, um, to check that box. And, and if we wanted to do something down the road, what do we do with the capacity if we approve 150 more units?
So, I agree with you that 35 is a better bet than 34.
Then with that, we should-
But, but what Maron just said, that of all the plans that are being submitted now, which are basically what you're going to write for 35, most of them are coming back with changes. Right? So, most likely, if, even if we pass 35-
I'm afraid to hold off on passing 35.
That's why I'm suggesting that we send something that they vet, because we, if we pass 35 now, we're going to come back in November and ask for all of the things that they said were wrong, anyway.
Well, hoping they're not going to. That's why we hired a consultant. We're in compliance. We've done the models. Everything is in compliance of what, or the governor's-
It's more than the compliance models. I, the compliance model is the easy part.
Well, let's, let's talk about 35 for a second. So, we were all at that meeting last week, or watched it. But what's your comfort level? I mean, that room with taking this, just say if you just brought 35 to town meeting in May, what's your comfort level with everybody understanding it and just being, I mean, I don't, I don't know how this article is even going to look right now. I don't, you know, we were presented four different, five different, six different options.
Yeah, keep talking about it, Jim.
Oh, just, yeah.
Okay, but the consensus, if, if you were in the room, the consensus was the last two projects on Foster Street.
Right, the two of those.
Yeah.
Okay. So, that's the one that would be written into the article based on that sampling?
Mm-hmm.
And then people, assuming online, I would have wanted-
They have one more meeting to modify that, essentially.
So, then we get, we get the article done. We, we have public hearing on it, and we bring it to town meeting floor on May 9th, on May 7th. And the hope is that people realize that we have to do this. Maybe they didn't get it the first time that this was mandatory. The governor's made it crystal clear that this is a-
They've been watching the news. They've seen Andrea Campbell with Milton.
Milton lost 140,000. We're looking at 14 million, and then-
But I just, I also know that the, like, the threat or the fear is not going to work at town meeting. It just, it doesn't.
It's, it's reality.
So, I, I just want to make sure that people understand what they're, I mean, if I had my way, I would, I would zone the entire side of Foster Street, or both, the whole thing that we had presented. I would just rather have homes there, mixed use of some than-
Than another office building.
Right, than a huge gigantic office building. I just think it's a nicer look. But, that, all being said, it did appear that the vast majority of the people in that room wanted to top of Foster.
I, I just, I, I'm with Mark. Putting both of these on the warrant, it's going to be a hard sell, even, even with just 35, and even with all of the community outreach that you've done. I think there's always going to be a vocal minority who's going to oppose at a town meeting. And I think if we add 34, it gives even more reason for people to object, because they're going to be saying, you know, "You're, you're giving us two things. You're, you're, you're giving to the state twice. Why are we doing this?"
But 34 goes away if it's, if 35 is approved.
Yeah, but, but that kind of subtlety just does not matter when we go to the floor of town meeting, based on the last town meeting.
I don't think we put 34 on.
But I think we all, I don't-
It's a two-thirds vote to begin with, whereas the MBTA community's 35.
I don't think we removed it.
So, majority.
So, could I ask if 35, um, is passed, and then 35 gets kicked back because it's insufficient for some reason, do we have to vote on the whole thing again? Is it a referendum on 35 again, and it, and a chance that it gets voted down the second time? Because it was inadequate the first time?
Right, so, so the general process would be for, to make any amendments to, to that.
Just a little amendment.
Okay, so only the amendments on the floor, not the whole thing.
We just had to replace one little part of the fire on pilot. We didn't have to do the whole pilot, just the pieces that you don't dislike. Which we don't understand that there would be a piece.
Maron is, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I, I guess, to Mark's point, we would know there wouldn't be if we did the 90-day process.
Would it, would it be value, Maron, would it be valuable at all for, um, going, if, if we took what is potentially going to be a scenario, a likelihood of a scenario, and made that, had an, had an offline conversation with, with the staff at HLC, and tried to see about identifying areas that we may need to make corrections on or anything that, would that be advantageous to our process to give a better comfort level to everybody in?
Right. As soon, as soon as we have a, a draft zoning bio, law amendment, I would recommend we do file that with HLC. We won't hear back. It'll be four 90 days, but, at least.
I, in the, in the, but I, I understand that's the formal presentation. What I'm, I'm referring to is the offline conversation, kind of like what we had today, of trying to do something formal but informal, and, um, just as we would be able to provide, we provided them today with a comfort level, we would want a comfort level back of, okay, what we have here, without reading the fine print, it, it looks, it looks good. I mean, it looks, it looks acceptable to give, to give the select board of, of everybody in the town, you know, a, a comfort level that we could sit there and stand there on May 7th and say, "We had a preliminary, wasn't the official process, but a preliminary people that would be reviewing it in its entirety, in detail, have said, 'This, this, this looks good. This looks good. Just cross the Ts and dot the Is and go get it passed.'" I mean, is that's, so is that something that would be amenable? And taking off, and not try to, taking off 34 then? If that was, if that would be the, the rule of doing it?
If we're going to take 34 off, I would hold on, because I'm just thinking about the time, we, we're talking this 90-day thing. I don't know if it's just talk, because I don't trust the state on some of this stuff, but-
They've committed to it.
That would be, that would be in the next couple of weeks, that they would have to respond to that.
Yeah.
If they, if they're holding true to this. It was so early, Jim.
No, the letter is different from the 90 days.
The letter is like, dear governor, but this is like a formal process where you submit it into a particular-
Sure, but I, I mean, I know that that letter is going to tell us what the vibe is.
Yeah, but I don't think the 90 days applies at all to the letter, is all I'm saying.
But I, I mean, we could have, it's funny, because we were in Boston. I said, "Can you please respond to the letter?"
Yeah.
You know? "Yes, we're working, you know, we're working on it." And that was, so-
And, quote unquote, it's, let us a comment, it's, it's above my pay, pay grade.
I mean, in a, in a perfect world, in this town, I would, I would want, this is never going to happen on an article, but the same thing we sat in this room with, with all the two, "Here's your, here's your options, town. Vote with your clickers. Which one do you want? A, B, C, or D?" Or whatever. That would be the perfect thing. That'd be a ridiculous article.
Can't be written.
We can't write it, right? But, so, we're basing what we know on a room full of people, and hopefully some online, we had some onlines. I, I jumped on there, did.
139 responses so far.
Okay, so, we're getting up to a number that's equal to town meeting, that we will have at a town meeting.
Yeah.
What's the minimum?
So, that's, that makes me feel a little more comfortable. You probably have 200 people.
So, can, can I ask a slightly separate question to Maron or Mark? Is there a reason we wouldn't put 550 as a separate article from the Foster Street for the MBTA, on the assumption that if the Foster Street passed, we still can show that we're making progress with the state on the MBTA compliance? If it's only one small thing of zoning, why don't we just do that as its own article, separate from the Foster Street? And regardless of whether Foster Street passes or not, you can at least show the state, "Look, we are making progress." Right?
Littleton is already in good stead with, um, the governor's office and with HLC regarding housing and our housing initiatives. Um, I would hate to start, I'll call it playing games for lack, lack of a better word, um, with the process, and trying to trick the state, and trying to show that we're making progress. We've already done the hard work of 550 King Street. I would suggest keeping it all as one article, just so that town meets, you signal the town meeting floor that you're really looking for the whole package.
So, let's just play this out. Say we get an answer to the letter, that the state would be, would consider that would be a feasible thing. It happens after we zone. We've got the zoning on Foster Street done. What flexibility does that answer give you guys on Foster Street? Because it, does it change that? Now, now we're talking, well, they said we can have, we can use the 150, even though we voted, I didn't make it on town floor, but I got a letter saying that that would be something they would do. Does that give you an enormous amount of flexibility on Foster now what you can approve? You, because now you're not bound by the density, because the density now is really locked in now, and we can count that density on, on King.
Yeah, but the, the bylaw, it has to do with the MBTA communities. If the MBTA communities go away and the governor says, "We don't have to have them down there," that means we have to allow it to go down there.
Except it's already passed.
Yeah, if it's already passed, but we don't need the 150 units. We can say, "We've satisfied it." You know, we don't, it's, we, they still have to come before the town.
Yeah.
We could still, from a planning board standpoint, say, "No, we're satisfied it. We satisfied our commitment." We would be sued.
You can't just, you can't just shut up right here.
So, okay.
You, I, I think you would be sued, because once you passed it, they have the, they could pull a plan, say that they're going to put whatever units down there, and we can't tell them no.
Thing, the only thing that saves us is both of the properties that we're talking about. Already have buildings on. You're not talking that this is going to happen tomorrow. We could get it rescinded before those.
Oh, we could, it's been 15 years.
Yeah, but all they have to do is pull a plan and they have eight years, so.
Those two buildings.
Definitive subdivision.
Yeah.
Or A and R for years.
Hold on, so, I know, with public comment, I have, we have to work through the boards first, and I'll get to, I'll get to you.
It's specific to this question.
It's specific to this question.
No, I know, come on up, come on up.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
So, and, and hopefully with very good, Saul Marini, 149 Hartwell. Can a planning article be passed with a delayed effective date? So you could pass this first one effective December 15th. If it gets agreed to, you're good, if it doesn't, it's not in effect, and no, things have been done.
But we'd have to rescind it before it comes into effect.
Yes, but you're doing that when you go to do the next one.
The governor has to pull a mandate, you turn it down after, it's not effective until they have a mandate.
Right.
But we can, if you push it out past when fall town meeting is, you have the potential to fix whatever.
We also have the test for it to fail, though.
But I think what Saul's getting at is if, if, if we remove 34, we pass 35, with the condition that it, it goes into effect on December 15th. And then, in August, we get the letter saying, we'll accept 550 King Street. We have some time to rescind Article 35.
I think you have to do it the other way, because it sounds like he's not going to address 34 unless you pass it. I think you have to do.
Is that true?
The extra property at 550 with the old MBTA zoning there, and then if they say no to it.
Are you saying the governor won't, won't address it unless it's passed? Is that, is that true? Has, has anyone?
That's what Jim was saying.
I think we, we need to go from Boston.
You don't believe that the governor will address 34 unless the town passes it?
Hey.
Well, will address the extra units at 550 unless the town passes it?
I think that's, that's, yes.
What's your comfort level on this, guys? Yeah, I don't want, I mean, this is a lot, we still, it's not like, we still have a couple of weeks to absolute this.
I think there, there are several scenarios that would work technically, I just think that I'm very, I'm not confident any of them will make it across, you know, make it on the floor at town meeting, because all of them are somewhat complicated to explain.
Except, well, 35 isn't complicated.
Well, no, but all the scenarios where both of those articles exist on the warrant.
What if, what if, what if the sequence was different?
What do you mean?
To tell. What if, what if they're not on top of each other?
Doesn't matter, they're in the same town meeting.
No, I understand that, but I, I, but if it's, what if it's reversed? So.
They're still just as confusing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, just, just for clarity, um, the MBTA communities, when we were talking at the town meeting the other day, 550 and 410 were in there, so when you're, when you put 550 in the MBTA communities, you're also putting 410?
And, and.
And 584.
Plus the Yangtze site.
Okay.
So, oh, go ahead.
Just one final comment, I was going to ask, given the conversations that our town administrator had today, would it be a benefit to have another type of conversation, updating HLC with this conversation tonight? And maybe they have another thought about how to proceed with this, I'm just wondering.
I was just talking to Chuck, well, let's just go down to Boston.
Yes.
Really?
Seriously, we've done it before.
We'll talk to them, because that's the only way it can be done, but.
Yes.
That, I mean, I, um.
Or bring their person here, whomever that is.
Yes, I mean, it's, everything's hinged on, everything is hinged on town meeting, pat, adopting the MBTA zoning. That's, you know, that makes, as, I think, as far as it, if, in the event, in the event that the, the town adopts it, the MBTA zoning with, um, intending this. I think it, all the other problems, they see it go away. Then, the letter's a remove point, Article 34 is a move point, the grants are in place.
We're locked loaded at that point, yeah, we're all set.
Exactly, then everything is all set. And don't forget, it's, what we're asked being asked to do is just change the zoning. In regards to any scenario that's selected at town meeting of six, seven, eight, or nine, or whichever, whichever it may be, that, that's just even, you know, further progress down, down, down the road.
If we're jumping in with both feet on this, on the zoning.
Right.
I mean, the presentation, he's, the pictures, what the housing's going to look like up there, you know, potentially, of course, but that type of thing, and how, that's, those are bigger lots, so it'd be spread out a little bit more probably too, but.
But I, but I think saying it's just the zoning, on one hand, we have Foster Street, which may or may not get developed at some point in the future, on the other hand, we have 550, which absolutely will get developed. And I know that the Lupoli company will use those 150 units, I guarantee it.
I wouldn't guarantee it, because who knows what the market bears.
Sewer capacity, there's a lot of things that play there too.
So, Ryan, when's the book go to print?
April 68.
Huh?
April 8.
So, so the planning board's having their meeting on April 4th, and you're going to approve a whole zoning article that no one's seen by then?
Okay, there is a, um, planning board has filed a draft article with the town clerk and, and a map as well. Those are both posted on the planning board's website, it hasn't been dropped, well, the article will not be in the warrant, it'll be in the town meeting booklet. So, it's, it's in, yeah, we have the draft ready to go.
So, I, I'm just worried that, I, I mean, the one for the, the fall town meeting was very large, right? What was printed in the booklet, and we can't put that on a handout and expect it's going to pass town meeting, so. If there's any modifications to it after the book goes to print, they have to be very minor. And I'm just hoping you are confident you have enough time?
You're absolutely right.
All right, let's, let's play out the clause of, say it passes, 35 passes, because that's all we present, we don't present 34. 35, we got a clear message, 35, this was from the meetings and the surveys, this is the, the zone that people wanted, the zone. Presentation, and then we look at, the letter comes in saying, with some type of approval, or like, no, we consider that somewhere in, in, I don't know, in July comes in, which I don't think they're going to, I agree. What happens?
If, if it passes on May 7th, we're going to begin, I think, we're going to get, we're going to get a, a letter on May 8th saying, denied. Because they're watching closely.
No, I know they are.
And frankly, they don't want to give a waiver to anybody because they don't want to create a precedence. Right, but the, but because of the, the upheaval that this is creating around the state, especially to the extremely small communities that have little to no infrastructure.
No capacity, yeah.
For to increase 150 units in, like, Newbury, West Newbury, I think it's Rockpool, and, and, all over, I mean, they're, they're just.
Definitely.
They're like, we can't do it.
Right, the, the good, good news is, Littleton will get a, if the, the 550 King Street development moves forward, we will get a shuttle from the, from that site to the commuter rail station, based on the planning board's decision. And between the 550 King Street and the Village Common District, there, you know, the 410 Great Road and Yangtze Site, there is capacity in that larger area for, you know, more than the 600 units that is required. Like, like to end on a positive note, so we do have that going for us.
There's 802 in the current plan.
So, I would just like to say, on behalf of the other three planning board members, who have not even had a chance to even think about everything we've talked about tonight, so, um, once again, it feels like it's, we're really pushing, 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 and that always feels incredibly uncomfortable. I would just ask that if there's any opportunity to meet again with the folks at HLC between now and April 4th, to get any further clarity about this, that I think would be beneficial. And if there's no further clarity, then it's looking like number 34 is looking less likely.
All right, I, I, that's a fair statement.
So for tonight, should we just leave them both and then decide which one to pull?
Right, at the end of the day, we could pull on the day before print, but we don't want to push that. But I, I think if we're going to meet for the 6th, I mean, we, we're, we're going to have to meet again.
Meet the day?
Well, we'll be the 7th.
Well, the next, our next meeting is two weeks from now, so it will be the 8th, so.
The 8th.
Yeah, so, we'll talk to the printer and see what, what she's got, so.
Should we just plan to meet next week?
Yeah, but can.
Depending if we've got more information.
Can we get HLC in front of us before?
That would be, that would be the 1st of April. Well, I guess we just.
April Fool's joke.
We could, we could steal a different day in there, if you really want to push it out to like the 3rd or 4th, when do you meet, the 4th?
The 4th, and then probably begin at 18.
We can make it a joint meeting, if that's all we're going to discuss.
So, the 4th, we have a sewer meeting that night. Or Chuck and I do.
Yeah, okay, um.
But, I mean.
I, I'd like to push as far as we can to the right, I mean, if it could be the 3rd, if, if you want it to be the 1st, we're just going to have to jump through hoops this week to see if we can get on a Zoom meeting with HLC, or something, to discuss what we discussed here tonight, and just hang it off them, and if they, we're getting a bad vibe, you can read a room.
Yeah.
I mean, I came back from November 8th, reading a room of, we've got to zone Foster Street, that's the vibe I got.
We all.
Now.
Right.
That was pretty clear as day to me. They're not going to give a variance or any leeway on that.
The director was very open to, you know, if you need any, you know, we can, if you have any issues, just reach out, and. So, I don't think that that would be a far-fetched request to be able to convene a meeting this week, a, a Teams meeting or something. Do you agree, Ma?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be, and I think, and, and the chair and the vice chair in regards to, you know, getting a better comfort level and what those, what those, um, questions, or, maybe, how would we want to pose it? What would we want to pose to give everyone a better, you know, a question? A better, a better, sorry, a better comfort level.
So can you post us, you want to post next, for next Monday?
So, you said this goes to print on the 8th?
Yes.
So we're not going to see what's actually printed before, we're not meeting again to discuss what's actually in the print?
That's what I'm saying, we got to meet.
Meet on the 1st or the 2nd.
Or, yeah, I, I mean, I, I, we need to meet to actually approve, we're not, yeah, we're not, I don't think anyone was ready to vote to place anything or assign anything tonight.
So first or second, Monday or Tuesday, work for everybody?
Yeah. Either one.
All right, and then, try to get a meeting.
I will.
And then, uh, just answer some of these questions, and if we have to pull an article, we pull an article, and then.
Okay, who would like to be in the, in that meeting? Who, who do you, who would you like in that meeting? Obviously, the, you know, Ma, myself, town council.
Yeah, I'll, I'll gladly be in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Another member wants to be in, availability.
I mean, I can do it.
This depends what it is, I guess. Okay, I'll make sure I find out who's available, so we have another member, so I have.
I'll just, I'll just give the general environment of who's going to, and, and ask for a, a meeting this week, I'll, I'll email or, after this meeting tonight.
Okay, and we, because we have a couple ideas, I mean, there's a few different plans that, they all meet muster, then we come up with the best idea, at least a little better idea of what isn't coming to work.
So even says Ted also, one of the planning board members.
Yeah, that's why, yeah.
And then when are we going to, which night are we going to meet?
The 1st or the 2nd, if you're available on both.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll just kind of see.
Yeah, both, but.
Okay.
Which?
Okay, and we, I'd rather push it out as far as we can, the 2nd.
Let's do the 7th.
Yeah. And it's, I know it's.
This room might be hurting you on the 2nd.
Yeah, wherever we can meet, 2103.
Can I just ask Mr. Chair, because I mean, there's still, I mean, I mean, obviously, there's the, the 34, 35 dynamic, and that's fine, we can still meet, I just, but then, most everything else here is, you know.
Yeah, no, we're.
Ready to go, I, I, you know, it's.
I, I wanted to vote after FinTom gave their recommendations on the finance update, I don't think, listening to them today, I didn't see a, besides the fact.
This is the second time they've seen most of these articles, and they were fine the first time.
And I didn't hear any big ravens since.
No, no.
No, they want, they might chime in on these zoning articles.
Right, right, because it makes it a lot easier for me if I can get some sense about order and, you know, what, what your perspective is on.
Okay.
Most of them, again, I'm, I'm setting aside the planning board articles, which again, typically don't make recommendations on anyway, so, but most of the other pieces are, you know, are ready to go, so.
Yeah, and so you want us to vote on those?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I would, I mean, you know, we got bills of prior years, and then some of them, it's highlighted in yellow, just, again, you could probably knock post them out pretty quickly.
Okay, just say the numbers, and we'll do a motion.
Okay, um.
Does that mean we're voting on the order? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you weren't.
Oh, well, you want to do the order first?
Yeah, I, I definitely wanted, we can, I guess.
I was, I was asking, I didn't know, voting on the substance also votes on the number?
Oh, no, no, why don't we vote on the substance and then come back to the order, because we can always change that around.
All right, let's go.
That's fine, okay, so, uh, in terms of Article 2, is the bills of prior years.
Ryan, let's just say, I just want to look at these, does anybody have an objection? Without actually have read some of these, we don't have them in front of us, and it could be a, that's, that's the thing, without having the full narrative in front of us, it's hard to.
So Article 2, that, that's the full narrative?
No, that one, I'm just saying, I want to do all of them except for 34, 35.
Okay, well, and you'd be able to get through most of them, um, you know, the, um, you, you should be able to get through most of them. I mean, if you want, with the, uh, like, I mean, I don't have anything in here for, um, you know, for this, for the personnel, uh, for schedule delay, but we know it's two and a half percent, so, I mean, it, it, we're not, we're really not that far off.
Right.
So, um, you know, again, it, it helps me in terms of the, of getting a lot of these stuff, these things knocked out to, to proceed forward, so. You know, the, again, Article 3, you have the whole budget table, but we know, we've discussed the budget extensively, this just gives the bottom line.
No, I, I definitely, I, I just want to know what members are not comfortable with.
There was, like, there was that one question Mark had about the Betterment collections on 5?
4, which, actually, I just got that information.
Oh, okay.
So that is actually related to Betterment revenue received from the point, so there, so now it's, it's, it was a while back, so that, that's where, um, that's where it came from.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, is there some, there was some, is there a question about Oak Hill, the, the cell tower funds? I can't remember.
Whether we're just going to, whether it made sense to even have the article recommended, that was just based on making use CPC to save, so that, that was a question.
Right, that was a strategy, a policy question. And again, I think the balance is like 160,000 or so, you take it down, it's 140,000 with this change, you know, so, it isn't, you know, let me know you're there.
So maybe we make the change, which would allow them to spend those funds probably faster, and then we can close it out once the balance is wrong? Or once the balance is spent?
Well, we could move the $140,000, 160,000 into CPC at some point, right, and use it for a blended fund, and throw it back in the open space bucket, basically, which is what conservation wants, get the match from the state, and then, yeah. That's what the, that's what the argument is, it's not.
Well, I hate, that's why we do these little stabilizations for land, we're taking it away from a fund match, or matching, it, it just, you wouldn't do that with your own money, so why would you do it with the towns, that's all. If someone saw that, I was just like, it's doing the same service, why are we pulling it out of, just put it all on CPC?
An open space would apply to invasives in ponds as well.
Well, they're using it for.
Parting lots, boardwalks.
Invasive control, that, they're basically doing that in the lake, the only thing they're not counting is man, mowing, right?
But the lake is water quality, so that makes sense.
But it's still doing it out of the open space, they're managing invasives there.
It's coming out, okay.
I, I think I'd say to you, this is proposed by the Conservation Commission, so any radical change to that would probably be another conversation with them, so they came kind of late with this, so, you can, I, I don't think whatever, with these two articles, you're really committing yourself over the long term. I think these are all reasonable suggestions to make over the long term, but, you know, it's, it's fairly straightforward, at least in terms of what they're asking for, relatively limited in scope, and doesn't stop us from doing anything else in the first subsequent town meeting on that front, I just, so.
All right, go down the list, just, just say the number.
Well, that's just, so, I think the way we're doing it, like, the whole, the whole, but.
Yeah.
With Article 15, there's, um, obviously, we're doing the change to the special.
15, we're going to make, so, the changes on 15 is that the, the transfer from the special injury leave goes down to 100, from 155,000 to 125,000. And we're going to create new, a new article for the last two items, which is the CPC housing and the Long Lake Dock replacement. So those are going to be taken out of that and then, um, wrapped into a new article. So, and those contributions will be made to the CPC, what's the, what's the, Carol, it's going to be to the general fund, the bucket.
Blended?
Blended fund, the blended fund, yeah. That's, that's what we'll do on 15.
16, we're going to bring it up to full 1.5, right?
16 will be to the 1.5 balance, correct. 17 is as is, 18 is the 2.5 percent colo, we'll put a table in, and then, we're going to do a. And then, we're gonna do a re, new description on twenty, which was just to show the math. We spent three point five million, this will take six hundred and fifty-seven thousand off that purchase price.
Twenty-four, there were changes to remove.
So, twenty-four, so twenty-four, we were proposing, so there's the one we're removing, and then twenty-four, now, that might be one that you, if you wanted to hold off on, because we're waiting for a little more information, that's, that's fine. That's probably a good hold.
And the Webster property.
Which would be its own article.
Own article, yeah.
So, you wouldn't vote on that, so, so you'd hold on twenty-four, and then we're gonna make two new articles for the Webster and the Blended Funds, which, why don't we hold off on those?
Okay.
Those are fine, those are a hold.
One, we know it's gonna be on the floor, very close to the floor.
Mm-hmm.
And then, do we want to hash out now about whether we're gonna declare surplus by Select Board versus Town?
You know, that might be a good hold, too, because then we'll have more information, so that's fine, yeah, that's, that's fine, that's a good hold. Probably will hold on Shade Tree, because you'll probably have a little more information after tonight, that's fine. Collective Bargaining Agreements is a placeholder, so, which is fine. Twenty-nine is the shoulder for, to get us out of the Shova. I don't think you...
Since petitions were still doing with though. Thirty-three, you had a change of the title.
Yeah, well, we...
Because it wasn't dispensaries, I mean, although that's the correct official name, it's for grow facilities.
Okay.
So, however.
Under this circumstance, and then, again, a week from now, maybe we'll have more information on all three of the, three of the planning board articles, which is fine. We can say, hold on all four of those.
Yeah, I think so.
And then, the last one is just a placeholder for a transfer, so. By my tally, it would seem to be support for, support for all the articles, withhold on Article twenty-four, the two additional articles we have to add, which is the purchase of the Webster property and contribution to the Blended Fund. Hold on Article twenty-six, which is the Nagog Orchard, hold on Article twenty-seven, which is Shade Tree Committee, and hold on the three Planning Board articles, which would be Article thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five.
Not thirty, oh, yes.
And twenty-eight as well, the Collective Bargaining Agreements?
Twenty-eight is...
A placeholder.
Twenty-eight, oh, you know, no, Collective Bargaining Agreements are just a placeholder, and it's still gonna stay a placeholder, so, that wouldn't, that wouldn't change.
So, as Red Mark.
So...
Twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-seven, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five.
So, I'm, so we're voting to what?
We're voting to recommend, I believe.
Everything except?
Every one through twenty-three, twenty-five, and twenty-eight through thirty-two and thirty-six.
Fifteen's gonna be stripped down. And the special injury leave is going to be reduced.
Yeah, fifteen, as amended, as amended, fifteen would be as amended.
So, we're, all right, so as amended means you, you...
So, let's hold.
Get rid of the last two?
Yeah, so, so the amendment would be to reduce, yeah, we do, yeah, take out the last two, add that to the CPC Blended Fund article, and then the specially injur, injury reserve goes to half of a hundred and fifty-five, two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
So, I'll say I'm still not comfortable voting on, and I don't even know that I will be by time of standing, on the departure from the Shova Board of Health until we have more of a definitive plan on what we're gonna do when we just get out.
Right, so we don't hold on yet.
If, if you're asking me to vote to recommend or not, I'm not ready to do that from twenty-nine.
I guess the question to you is, what would happen over the next week?
I have no idea.
Probably nothing.
Right, it's, I, I'm, I'm, I'd still rather spend the extra money to be in in twenty-six than to...
And remember, Mark, if, if you stayed in in twenty-six, you also didn't have to stay in in twenty-seven, it's just a two-year, a minimum two-year commitment.
It's an elected board that is recommending it.
Yeah, and I, and I don't, I would be...
So, every time we have to sign up for another two years, we can't say we're gonna leave in two years?
Well, then you'd have to stay through twenty-six and twenty-seven.
You wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to be in it, you'd have to pay the fifty thousand.
Is it a two-year notice or a two-year term?
So, you wouldn't have to actually be in it.
Yeah.
You gotta pay them to be in.
Yeah, is it a... Yeah, Karen's question.
It's a two-year term.
It's a two-year term, we're just trying to give them sufficient notice that they can plan, you know, and it was a request specifically made to me through their representative that we, you know, telegraphed this message.
I think we should be getting out, if that's what, I mean, that's what we decided to do, but I'm very wary that we're ready to get out.
Well, I, I'm not wary that we're ready to be out, I think fifteen months of a handoff is a lot of time. My question is backup, just, that's my, my biggest concern, is we don't have another town that's partnering with us.
And we haven't solved the nursing problem, so.
We have fifteen months to address that.
Right, that, that's...
That was like one of the, yeah, so that was like, that was week one with the, with the Health Director, was to address both of those questions, so.
I'll beg, I'll beg a plea with the...
Fifteen months to get through, so.
The Shova, if we have to go back on, we'll make them an offer they can't refuse.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just...
Good luck with that.
So...
Thirteen other towns.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's like, you know, it's kind of like a divorce, right, you know, at this point, you know, they just want, you know, they just want our stuff out of their place.
Yeah, all right.
Point, so, I can't, can't fault them.
I mean...
Yeah, yeah, that's, so, and again, they, we've been, you know, it's been very civil, and we had a great conversation with our...
So, let's vote, we can, we can vote on that one, if, if we have a recommend, if we have three of the five or four.
I would vote for, for leaving, I think fifteen months is enough to cover our butts.
Okay, so we have at least three.
I think, I mean, we've got holds anyway, I think, holding on twenty-nine to see if we can get some more clarification from Mark makes sense.
That's fine. So, holding twenty-nine.
Yeah, and, and just, what clarification, I don't know what clarification I'm looking for, because it...
I guess it's Port of Health is the only ones that can give us, what's your plan?
Yeah.
You know, of...
San Francisco.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like, the, I mean, the plan is that he's gonna develop relationships with other members, other Health Directors in the area to back up vacations, sick time, extended leaves.
The building inspector.
Yeah, you know, so...
It'd even be more of, what's your confidence level, and if he gave a high confidence level, that we'd be able to do it, but if he said no, then... I'm not gonna say it's short money, fifty thousand, to carry us.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, that security is huge, if we don't, if we think we're gonna be in a situation, we can't...
You know, I, I think, I think what the Select Board needs to understand is, to some extent, that ship's already sailed. Once you've made the commitment to leave the Shova Board to help them as a backup, is, you know, other than the fact that we're still staying in there, you know, so, so...
All right, let's, let's...
I don't think that they want to serve in that role, anyway, so, it's, you know, we're no different than any other, you know, community that has that, I, you know, it's not, it's not easy, but that's...
All right, let's roll on the numbers that we got.
Yeah.
Are we giving them, are we okay with this order?
No, but let's get the vote out on what we're...
We're voting on substance first.
Yeah, recommendations, at this point.
So...
With the exception of the holds.
That's none of those conclusions.
So, the, so, it's, so that's B, so adopt article recommendation. We're probably too, too early to do assignment of articles, but we can do article recommendations with the exception of the holds that we had here.
And just to be clear, the holds are twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five. Does everyone agree? The holds are twenty-four, twenty-five, sorry, twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I am willing to vote to recommend all the other articles.
Okay, and we're gonna hold on, on the Shova one?
Correct.
Okay, fine.
I'd rather see, I'd rather see a draft that's, that everything that's gonna be in the booklet, I think, before I vote on any recommendations, and they're just, all the substances are there, so.
So, I think all of, I just, I agree with you. I agree with you, but the ones that we're, we're holding are the ones that don't have substance. So, if there's another one that doesn't have substance there, that you would have to see if you can...
I mean, there's not a lot of work on this, besides, you're gonna put Select Board recommends on all of these?
Well, the ones that you've recommended.
And then the ones we don't. It's, it's easy to strike those if we vote next week, you just have to strike one or, one or two, if, by, we're usually unanimous, I mean, there's very few that we end up not. I'm saying not recommend, not be unanimous, but, so...
In the end, usually I don't, you know, usually it'll just be Select Board recommends or doesn't recommend.
Right, so. You guys want to wait?
So...
A clean, a cleaner version?
I think Chuck wants to hold on fifteen.
That's fine.
Well, yeah, that, and I'd like to see. So, there's gonna be another, there's gonna be a CPC Blended Fund article, right?
Yeah, that one was RD.
Hell, yeah.
That one's held.
That's twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
So, you just want to add fifteen? Chuck?
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So, we're moving to a, move to Select Board adopt article recommendations for Articles one, two, three, four, five, six, what, just the ones that are held?
Yes, I see.
All, all Articles, fifteen, twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five.
Second.
Move by Mark, second by Matthew, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you. Now, we talk about the order.
Okay. I don't, so the, the order for me, I, I like putting some of the really, really tough articles last, doesn't usually work, people are just, by the end of the night, they're just done, and they just, and everyone's irritable, so, you know, I'm trying to think of the hot articles in this, the Webster property. I don't consider it a hot article if it comes in at CPC and everything's fine, or we've got, this is all what everybody wants. We get the land, we get, it's within, so, I don't think there'll be a whole lot of debate on that, but I think it should be moved up with some of the other, I think Indian Hill potentially is one that, people are gonna question on how that money's gonna be used, and hopefully we'll have better numbers, we will have better numbers.
So, I would like to move the Orchard up, just because I want to, one of the points of us...
It's huge, yeah.
One of the points of us doing this was to make sure that people understood we were suggesting we sell the Orchard, so that people aren't surprised by it if, if we decide to come back in the fall.
Yeah.
So, I would like to have that before everyone leaves.
Okay, so that should be way up.
So, I would just point out that with the band concert at seven, moving things up, we might want to move them like to eight, eight-thirty, hopefully, rather than like first.
So, maybe...
Because we'll maximize, I mean, you know, to give folks who are going to the high school band concert a chance to come.
Well, a lot of the Colliar, we can count on at least half of these being summed.
Yeah.
So, let's say... I mean, you just don't want it to be thirty-six, thirty-five, you want it to be probably twenty, in the twenties, I don't know.
Oh, like ten, probably?
Well, ten, I mean, you're gonna...
Call the articles, definitely.
You gotta be careful, because you're gonna call all those, all those financial articles, and they're gonna just disappear, and all of a sudden, you're gonna be down to twenty.
Yeah, okay.
In a half hour, so. I mean, what do you guys think?
So, I think there's, someone's gonna hold stuff on the budget, like, they always do.
Always, but it's usually a fair, we can usually get it answered.
For most of the rest of these, there might be some people griping about the sewer, but...
There's a lot of sewer in here.
Well, yeah, but...
You say like this sewer project, Matthew?
I was just thinking the enterprise, there's, there's often people who, but that may not, now that it's just an operating budget, you know, that may not be. I think the CPC budget will probably have some just debate.
I, I think the MBTA community should be moved up as far as possible.
Yeah.
If you're really talking articles, you want the most people there for, and the debate and everything, it needs to be...
Yeah.
It needs to be up there, so, let's, if you, if you're just looking at...
You could do that after the budget.
Yeah, after the last budget item.
Well, I mean, you could, you do the operating budget and go into it.
Yeah. That'll have a lot of discussion, but what's that put us at time?
I don't know, it depends how fast people can talk, I guess, you know, we...
I mean, I don't know how many people are gonna go from the concert to the, it is an unfortunate thing, that was a night that was...
I mean, that depends, there's a lot of variables, right, you know, the concert, and that's, you know, MBTA community's gonna...
Say it's thirty people.
Do we want to see if Jim could reach out to Kelly and see if there's any flexibility on the band concert?
Could do that, too.
Sure.
I mean, I'm not gonna base everything around that, but that'd be nice if he could say, hey, we have to postpone it.
It's worth asking, right?
Sure.
Yeah, easier for them to switch, probably, than a town meeting, but...
Yeah, if it's no, it's no, but...
I'm sorry, no?
I have a perfect record, but...
There's, look, there's the Orchard, there's Webster, there's MBTA, and Indian Hill, there's four controversial things on there. Outside of the budget, if each one of those controversial things takes...
An hour.
An hour, that's four hours, you're at eleven o'clock, with nothing else.
So, why, why is the Webster property controversial?
It may not be if it's CPC funds.
If it's CPC, it probably won't be.
But if, it has to be, because that's, if CPC is the one presenting the yard.
That's true, right, and if it's not, then it's not happening.
The Orchard is like, you know, we're not asking, we're not coming to say, here's who we're gonna sell it to.
It's like, prepare for this.
I think so, I mean, we're gonna talk about that on Wednesday night, but...
So, let's, the MBTA ones are the, are the ones that I'm thinking of, yeah, that's, I think that's the meat of the discussion. Indian Hill, we're gonna have some numbers, those numbers are the numbers, we're handcuffed by them, the only discussion possibly that could come out of that, if the number is so ridiculous, we say we're gonna sell the property, which I think is a disaster. Right? Otherwise, we're going to go forward with renovating that facility, knowing what the cost of...
And remember the question, we'll also come back to you, you have a base number, plus the ad alternate in the roof, plus the, the solar tube, so, there'd be some choices that you'd have.
Yeah.
And with that, you know, that's, as far as what that, you know, so, we're gonna be coming back to you in the Finance Committee with that.
Okay, so could you move the MBTA ones up? Move up the, or the Indian Hill up, so we have maximum participation, and then...
And the Orchard.
And the Orchard, I think, is that...
So, I'm just gonna say, by effectively doing that, you're moving the Webster one down, which was the one that was done absolutely last.
Yeah, we don't want to, it needs to go up to...
But, but you have four things that are potentially controversial, and you have to pick the order of those four.
MBTA is first.
Oh. I think anybody who stays for one is gonna stay for all of them, don't you?
And here's the other thing.
No.
Anyone on the floor can say, vote to move this article.
Opt for back, whatever.
Yeah, we vote on it, and typically, people do it, because they want to get it out of the way.
That's true.
So, we have that flexibility, too, we can text somebody in the audience. But... So, I, I think Webster's doesn't need to... What are we throwing down, I guess, we move all these up, what do we?
I think Indian Hill could move back a bit.
I would actually throw the Webster's in front of MBTA.
Okay.
Because it, that's potentially very quick.
It is, but I think, I think the MBTA needs to be the...
I think MBTA is going to be a huge time suck, right, and it's going to take all the energy from everything else, so...
Suck up life away.
I don't know, it's presented.
I think if everything comes through appropriately for the Webster property, there's really not much discussion, besides people that might want to say, this is standard, we must buy this way under, we don't, but I think if Sid Calum already has a recommendation for it, once we know the numbers, we have a recommendation, it's gonna look a lot different than it did in November, because we've got, if, if it's a no recommendation across, that's where the discussion's gonna get really...
So, if we just go through the ones that we said are potentially controversial, the Webster property is either going to be, or we think it's quick, it's either gonna be controversial or quick, Indian Hill, either controversial or quick, the Orchard, maybe in the middle, but MBTA, controversial, so, the other ones have the potential of going quickly, the MBTA one does not, so I would favor putting it last of the controversial ones.
Yeah.
I could see that.
I agree, yeah.
Yeah.
I wear there all night, so.
Yeah. The MBTA one has the potential of throwing you into the second night, right, much more than the other ones.
Stop at the second night, then.
I'm, I'm worried about it.
Okay.
Do we have a plan for a second, like, can we, do we have facilities for a second night?
Yeah, there's always that backup.
Okay.
The Webster part doesn't do too. Point, though.
Right.
Right.
Me, the principle goes back on May first, right, that's not acceptable to Mr. and Mrs. Webster.
Right.
Right.
The article gets pulled.
Then it gets pulled.
So, yeah, so the Webster will either be something that's very relatively quick, or old, or.
Yeah, okay.
I, I, like I said, I think those three have the potential of being something that we can do in under an hour. The MBTA one is not under an hour.
Just keep in mind, too, the Webster, we have to also package that with the other CPC articles, so we're gonna have the.
It has to be, it has to be done before the other.
Yeah, so it's, right, so it's that one, and then the contributions to the full bucket, and then, and then the full of CPC articles.
So they have to be adjacent?
Well, they, they probably, thematically, they're all kinda connected with one another.
Well, the Webster one has to be in front of the current twenty-four, that's the only real requirement.
Right, the only, the only real requirement, right.
Okay.
Between, between now and next week, if you see something glaring that says we can't do it this, change the order, we just do it. I mean, but I think.
Well, you can, you know, the guidance you gave me tonight, I can, I can take a, you know, stab at the order.
And we vote on the order on.
Yeah, I mean, but you're giving me guidance, though, as to how to, how to handle it, so that's helpful, and then we can then come back at it.
Yeah, the message is we just don't want those articles at the end of the town meeting when it's people sitting there looking at the clock, like.
Okay, are there things that you, that you do want at the end of the town?
Well, you know, I mean, I mean, the, the citizens petitions, I, I think are gonna have discussion, but they're, you never know with citizens petition, so it, you're. Yeah, there could be discussion, I mean, or it may not be, I don't know.
I, well, not, I mean, just to be my own contradictory pain here, I don't like those being at the end either, because then we don't really get a fair hearing, but I don't know how to solve that problem, so.
Well, a second night would solve that problem.
Thank you. Set you up for that one.
You too. All right, can we move on?
Yeah.
Please?
All right.
I'm just, I, um, yeah, and I guess we can do the, we can do the annual town meeting, or vote for voting at our next meeting, too, if we know we're gonna do that, so we have some guidance as to how to proceed, so that's fine.
Good.
I got the recommendations, so that's fine.
Let's knock out our member updates, real quick. Let's do member updates first, sometimes I answer some stuff. Anybody wanna start, kick us off? I've got a few items.
Sure, so the orchard voted to approve sale, and we covered that already. And we expect that we will be able to move the upper barn into the APR, not the house. The committee has discussed in the past as a Plan B that they'll seek a historic preservation restriction on the house instead, if the APR restriction didn't come through. So while we haven't voted on that yet, that's what the discussion's been.
Any of those votes come back here first, right?
Yeah, the recommend.
We're just a recommendation.
Yeah, it's a vote for a recommendation, correct. We're working with town council to get some clarification on process, specifically what the request to town meeting would be, whether it's a request to sell. Per the Select Board's decision, or whether it's something else.
And we discuss it.
Yeah, and then, the only other thing I had was, thanks to Parks and Rec, actually, I had a resident that came to office hours and was asking about the beach mats, and hoping that there could be some more time that they're down over the course of the year. Generally, I think down, and they go down at the beginning of the season, and then they go back, right back up once Camp T is over. And the resident was, for access issues, ADA issues, they were looking for, to have more time to be able to walk on the beach, and access to the beach through that. They attended the, the Parks Commission meeting and got some reassurances from Parks and Rec that they would be extending that, and I think Jim was also chatted with folks, and so it looks like that's gonna be a positive move forward, so thanks for that. And that's it, period. Somebody else?
She covered everything that I was gonna say.
Sorry.
Sure.
I think a bunch of us met with Mass D O R to just discuss. Town government and their current format, and just kinda do an audit and assessment, so that was, I think it was productive to have that, and looking forward to getting that report. Ryan kinda teed it up as far as the, the Shake-A-Lane Building Committee, Selection Subcommittee, Designer Selection Subcommittee, we met in, the MSBA meeting where that's presented is tomorrow at eight-thirty AM, I think, right? I have that on the calendar correctly. Oh, I think, like you mentioned earlier, I think we all went to the MBTA community's public forum, I think that was, that, that. Well-run and productive session. Seussical the Musical opened this past weekend, put on show, four shows over the weekend, and it was a tremendous production, the kids had a lot of fun. I think as did the, the audience, so it was, it was very interactive, and it was a lot of fun. And. Just a reminder to everybody that on April first, the sewer construction will begin again, and I think eight PM until five AM, is, check the, check the road signs and expect some noise at night. The other thing is I did, made a point to meet with the introduction and welcome to Francis Stagel, the new Health Director.
Mark?
So, I also attended the play, I thought it was awesome, or the musical. Jim and I went to, and Gary went to the Rotary Meeting on Wednesday. As an introduction, Jim hadn't been to any of the Rotary Meetings yet, so he got inundated with a lot of things. One being that the Rotary is planning on holding a carnival in June. So stay tuned for more information on that. I wanted to report back that the Library Mini Golf Event was very successful and raised approximately twelve thousand dollars. I attended the CTPC Planning Meeting in Holy Cross with a couple of Planning Board and ZBA members, it was, they talked about the MBTA, they had a bunch of seminars, it was very informative. Also, the Affordable Housing Trust is on the cusp of issuing the RFP for building the, the Hottaway property, the.
Tap of Town?
The Brown, the Browns, whatever, yeah, I don't remember what the address is exactly, but we'll be issuing the RFP hopefully within the next couple of weeks. I also wanted to, it didn't make the agenda, Kim Albertelli sent something, the Cultural Council wanted, I don't know if we have to vote on the permission to give them to put.
Wooden flowers?
Wooden flowers up, or if we can just tell her, she can, or.
What's, what is it?
The cultural.
The Cultural Council wanted to put wooden flowers around at the police station, fire station, and town, town commons. Do we have to vote on that, or can we just?
It's kind of the scare cars, do the scare cars a couple of years ago, and just different.
I mean, we'll put stuff on the common, I know we have to prove it, obviously, with all the high school signs and stuff, do we have to do that? Fire piece, and they can just say, yeah, go ahead, the chiefs.
Yeah, I'd just say, have, have the Cultural Council just, if they go to the police station, just, you know, clear it with the chief and find out where the, where the sprinkler heads are, don't, don't hit the sprinkler line, but.
So we should have on our next meeting if we wanna allow them to put it on the common, or do we have to do it on the other side? If they put it on the other side of the common, no one puts anything over there.
Just have it on our next agenda, it's Tuesday, we can knock this out.
Okay.
We're not gonna say no, I mean.
Yeah, okay, and that's all I got.
Just because Mark mentioned with the Cultural Council, I know that they've been trying to get other authorization from, wherever they can get authorization from, to paint the, the gray boxes at, at all the traffic lights.
Oh, yeah.
Electrical boxes, they've run into a roadblock, because all the boxes that we have in town apparently are owned by Mass DOT, and there's, so I spoke with Stephanie Giadopoulos, and said that I'd try to reach out to somebody at Mass DOT. There's, there's a couple of residents who work for Mass DOT, and I thought I might be able to get some leverage that way, and I think it's something that would be awesome to, I think, gives artists an opportunity to have a canvas, and it also makes those gray boxes and green boxes look a little prettier.
Which reminds me, the other, I attended the Bicycle and Pedestrian.
And another thing.
Bicycle and Pedestrian, uh, meeting, they're actually, I think they're going to reach out to Light and Water to ask to have the crosswalks repainted that were ripped up as soon as possible. They will be coming to us at some point to request us, us to request the state to lower the speed limit from, from mobile to Acton Toyota. It goes from twenty-five to thirty-five to forty-five, and they want it twenty-five all the way to the forty-five spot. There's also talk of trying to lower the speed limit from Hartwell four ninety-five intersection to the high school where it's, I believe it's forty, and that's where the bicyclist was struck.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they'd like to lower it there, I don't know what their recommendation is, but they will come to us at some point in the not-too-distant future and ask us to write a letter to.
Yeah, all the chiefs come in and give recommendations.
Yeah.
Speaking of lines, Jim, thank you, I know you had a lot of thank yous, you guys over the last couple of weeks, you had some, some lines done really quickly.
Yeah, no, I mean, it was really, there wasn't, it was really the state delegation who made the phone call, made the phone calls to them, but.
That usually takes forever to get anything done, so I'm surprised.
They were, they were very, um, responsive, reacted really, really well, so, glad, glad to do it.
This, I, I must've missed the meeting, but this is fantastic, this is a great idea, this is, I know we talked about it, Karen knows it's one of your goals, to have something like this.
Yes.
This is fantastic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what's the plan?
Well, the plan.
Of all those, I'm looking at, looking at the town of Littleton Monthly Newsletter, which.
But that's gonna, it's not gonna be mailed out.
Okay.
What we're gonna do is it's gonna be in that kind of a format, so you'll be able to turn the pages, it's gonna be online.
Electronic.
Good.
And we're gonna have an act early, it's gonna be the, the first page is not gonna be the, the town administrator, it's gonna be the Select Board message. So it'll be reversed, and the town administrator will be on the, on the inside page. So it's, but it was a lot of, lot of, lot of hard work. Nancy, our IT, IT Director, really took the lead, and put some really good input from, from staff, and this is just, it's a work in progress, project, and we had a department head meeting this morning, and really highlighted where we are. At this, in this process, and the, all the department heads will be much more vigilant in making sure that they share updated information. So that will be on the, on the website, and then we'll have links there that will go to L E L W D, to the School Department, to the Council on Aging Newsletter, so that will be, it's very, it's gonna be very resourceful.
That's great.
And reaching out.
I need a magnified glass in the calendar.
Well, that was just a sample, you're right, but, I mean.
This is good, thank you, 'cause that's, that's our board stuff.
Karen really gave the guidance on.
Oh, eventually, I think we can source.
On format, and everything.
Resource us eventually to become a, mailed out, I think, I really think that would.
And I, I, I agree with you, and I think it's gonna, it's, it's a work in progress, so we will make changes, you know, based upon need and demand and things like, but it's, it's a good start, it's a very positive start.
Great, great. I had a couple of things to grab, well. Obviously, wanna bring back up Gary Wilkins and George Davis, I sympathize for the family, families, of course, and everybody that knew the two gentlemen. But updates, congrats to Littleton Park and Rec, I know, I don't think we've met since they received their Massachusetts Recreation Park Association Agency of the Year Award for Public Outreach. For Adult Recess Programming, so John Cassangeen specifically received the reward, and that's just, it's a, it's a great honor, I saw a lot of stuff on Facebook and everything, so kudos to them, to the team for doing all this, and putting. Up against everybody else, it's not an easy thing just to, to get, so that was fantastic to see that. And just a reminder, Chief Clancy's final stretch here, this week, he'll, he'll be done. I know the deputy had mentioned March twenty-ninth, nine-thirty to eleven-thirty AM, they're gonna do a little thing down at the fire station for him, so, and we can talk more with us, something else. Either later on or the town meeting, I have some more thinking, but. We can talk about that. I will mention the Rotary Meeting, because it, for those that have been here a while, know that the circus used to come to Littleton, carnival is gonna come to Littleton, we are going to have it, it's gonna be at the IBM property, and that, you know, so, so, Polley, thank you for ever working, getting, landing that. But allowing the carnival to utilize that huge area, so I think it'll be a great success, and it's just nice to see something like that for the community, Littleton.
The funds.
Act and does it all the time, yes. I don't wanna mess up where the money's going, but I, you might know a little bit more.
The tread fund.
The first, the first ten, they're guaranteeing ten thousand dollars.
To tread.
The first ten thousand goes to tread.
Yep, and then after that, I think it hit a number, then it's fifty-fifty, goes to other things that we decide, so it's gonna be a great event, not just because of that, it's a big fundraiser, but it, it'll be a really fun, fun event for the community and surrounding towns. Let's see. Oh, this, this Thursday, groundbreaking ceremony for the Center of Chatham Street, so right up here, Thursday at four-thirty PM. I, I've gotta speak, obviously, I was asked to speak at that, so I'm sure there's other, it's gonna be a few speakers.
Will be in New Jersey.
Will be in New Jersey, so please.
Secretary of Elderly Affairs is gonna be there, also, yeah, yeah, that is very, very good.
So, I see that project moving along quite well up there, so. I figured one of you guys would hit this, I'm, I get to steal it, FRC sixty-three twenty-eight, I know we talked about it already, the robotics team, what wasn't mentioned is that they were third out of one hundred and eighty-five teams, and that's pretty amazing. And what I, the question I'd have for you, Jim, is they had mentioned that, that meant that they should be invited to Springfield, to the districts, on April fourth to sixth, I don't know if they, did they get the invite?
I don't know.
I, I think Katie said something else, they, they did.
They did get it, so, yeah. So that's, that's fantastic, so that'll be more to look forward to from then. That's really all I had, I'm glad, glad to be back, got a head cold basically soon enough the plane, but I'm all right, and I wanna open it up.
Welcome home.
Public input, I, there's only a few of you here, I don't know if anybody wanted to speak, Mr. Sanders?
George Sanders, six-hitting two great road. Mr. Chairman, first I wanna ask the question, has a decision been made with Shake-A-Lane, are they gonna renovate, are they gonna lock down, build a new school, what is the scoop on that?
We've been provided.
Yeah, you too.
We've been provided with the two designers that are going before MSBA tomorrow, they've presented both options to us, so it hasn't been finalized yet, yeah.
Second thing I wanna talk, for my two minutes, Mr. Chairman, is about this warrant, and specific by the MBTA. You know, I've been around government a lot of years, and I don't think that the fallout, the state, I was told early on, that was gonna be, from a very reliable source through my contacts. Said that they was not gonna give any exceptions to any community whatsoever, because the state has mandated that, and they didn't want to go through, you know, giving this one and giving that one, and, you know, it would just be a mess, and that's very true. So what happened is that the Attorney General, I mean, she's not gonna make herself look bad, she told him. She told them they have mandated and I'm gonna enforce it, so I am going to go to court with this matter. You know, I have faith in government, but I don't have the faith that I heard here talking about the government tonight about this is gonna do that and the governor, you know, if they do that. A lot of time people overspeak and it doesn't get to the right ear that makes the decision that says that, no, that ain't gonna be like that. So my thing is that I'm looking at what Littleton can lose and where we put us between the rock and the hot spot with regards to funding that is scheduled and that is going to be asked for with grants coming into Littleton. We need to keep that at mind because that is very important. My suggestion is you, you can, you can always go back and do something. And if the people that we got, which was, I think, was 75, 80 people that was in this room and the consensus was that, you know, they were, they were sort of kind of happy with a couple of places, you know, give or take down there on Foster Street. You know, saying they're not gonna build tomorrow, it may be eight or 10 years, but the fact is, we designate. And I think that what we ought to put our heart and soul in is into the law. And they already gave us a benefit here to say do 20%. Go ahead and vote that in, and if we get it voted in, listen, you can always go and submit this letter that you want to take the chance on, that the state may do this. Sal always was gonna put transportation from there to the train station. So that wasn't something new about what was gonna be done.
No, as far as we know, but I just want you to know that he's doing it now, letting the state know that he's doing it as part of the MBT. So he's actually, he's working on behalf of the town in this regard. Obviously, he has a benefit from it as well, but so don't we. So it's, it's a partnership that we need if, if this is gonna even remotely have a chance.
Oh, I understand that and he really did the town a big favor here with regard to letting you pick it back off of it. So I'm appreciative of, you know, him doing that, but I think that we shouldn't put ourselves in jeopardy by not going and designating two areas down there off of Foster Street down there because the worst thing that you can do is send a bad message here tonight and to go to the town meeting. It says you don't really know what the left hand doing from the right hand. Because you're confused, do we do this or do we do that? Here say over here, it's nothing. Bird in the hand is worth tootus in the bushes. So we need to stay on course here and do what we need to do because we can always come back and adjust.
Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Thank you.
I think we'll get there. I think we're all committed to making sure that we don't lose.
This is a quick, Sol Murray, 1:40 in Hartwell. One reason there may be nobody here is the doors are locked and it apparently turns out that they probably lock at some scheduled time. It's happened before that I've tried to come to a meeting after it started, the doors are locked, so the banging was.
It might just be facial recognition. Thank you, though. That's, that's actually, nobody's gonna pound as loud as you did, so thank you.
We all took cover. We didn't know what was going on.
We, we will definitely, because we are typically here.
We weren't while you were in Hawaii, but.
All right, yeah, you guys got that? Yep. Really? I'll gladly slide right over next to you. All right, let's move on. We have a couple pieces of business here. Let's see. Human Resources Reclassification of Building Department Office Coordinator Position from Grade Eight to Grade Nine. I participated in this reclassification of this position. Basically, the job now is aligned more with, I believe, who else has an office coordinator? It's another position. I believe it's at the.
Parkinorakas one.
Senior Senator, I think, so.
Elder UG.
It aligns the office coordinator position now with that, with those two grades. We're trying to clean up, you know, what is an administrative assistant? What is a office coordinator? And that's what's recognized now with the Health Department coming in, that this is gonna become an office coordinator, a little bit more responsibility.
We also, there's also a facilities person we're continuing to try and.
Would be a lot of work down there for.
Right, so the, so the, and this was originally started, I believe, back in January of last year by the previous building, building commissioner or building director. And it did not, it, this, it sent a request, but the request did not actually hit the HR office until July of, of, of last year of '23. And, but there are more responsibilities that the individual.
So, so the recommendation of the committee was, or the personal advisory to the HR director was to approve this, that I believe you had.
Right.
Have pushed it forward, so.
Right, exactly, and I would make, I would make a request unfortunately because of the delay in, since July of, of not where it is today to really look at, because the, the job is being done since last January, but to make it the raise, the, the grade and the step is raised to July of last year.
Retroactive.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I, we, we don't have a policy, which we discussed in length a little bit about why there isn't a policy on when we do these great regrades.
Right.
How far back do you reach? Do you do it just, you know, like I said, I base everything off how the federal government, the, the thing is do it the next pay period. They don't care how long you've been doing the job, they got reclassed. We talked, I know there was a little bit of traction on if it's the first half of the year, you bring it back to July. If it's the second half of the year, you bring it back to January for the second half, whatever the half year, six month mark is. So I, I'm willing to listen to you guys. I mean, this potential, this one isn't a, a huge hit to the, to the budget, but I would like to know the ramifications and if this was a, if we start getting into this type of precedence, what about, you know, grade 20? Grade 20. If we have to do this, it could potentially be a little bit tougher on the budget, so what are your guys' thoughts?
I think, I don't. Jim, Jim's come in, he's assessed the situation and this is his recommendation and I, I think that we should support Jim and the individual.
Now, I will say you gave the case based on when it came to HR.
Correct, and it's been.
So let's just say this case came to in January, would we retroactive it all the way back to July? So that's, that's why I want to make sure, you know what I mean? Like, the reason why this is going back far is because it's literally been sitting.
It was supposed to be done last year.
Yeah.
But the recommendation was based on the fact that the work has been done since at least last.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you can make that of any job that has been reclassified.
So I just want to be careful that this is based on because of a delay and, you know, HR going through a lot of changes and the personal advisory committee getting stood up and all these things.
You could probably make the argument that the person's been doing this since 2020.
Right.
So.
Yeah, you can't, you can't play that game or it's endless.
Okay.
But, so I guess, if, if we're not gonna do a policy, we need to do this as a case by case, if we're all comfortable doing this case by case based on when it arrived.
Correct, and, but to, but to Mark's point, I mean, it, it, everybody's point, it could, the work could have been done, been done a long time prior and the conversation with the previous director could have started saying, that conversation with that department head that was in charge, but unfortunately that department head never got to HR where it should have gone from the very beginning. Didn't get there until approximately six months later. So I'm not really comfortable with the retroactive. When we did the other ones, we didn't make them retroactive, so.
I'd like clarification. I don't understand what the retroactivity is based on. Is it based on a paperwork snafu or is it based on that they've been performing at a level above what they?
They've been performing at a level above the, they were compensated.
But it was also a paperwork snafu. It was supposed to have been done, it was promised last year and it was, it just never got processed.
Unfortunately, it's, it's, it was just a, the magnitude of.
Yeah, Michelle.
Responsibility and work that's going through HR has delayed it.
Because I mean, every, everywhere I've worked, it's been a requirement in order to get promoted, you have to have been performing at the level that you want to get promoted to for at least one, one period of, of review. So I, I don't think that's a basis for retroactivity. However, if there's been a paperwork, you know, if things didn't get processed when they should have and there was some sort of delay that was of no fault of, you know, this person who is, you know, then I think that makes sense, you know, then I think that's fine.
But this isn't, and this isn't a promotion.
No.
This is codifying.
Well, it is.
A job description.
He has to call it a promotion because.
You're promoting their job.
Yeah, the job is.
Okay.
Being recognized as a higher grade position because it's duties, but I guess the point is July 1st we're using here, but I, I just want to know going forward, at least our board, we, we probably want to think about policy on, like I said, the six month rule or when it arrives in HR for reclassification and it does get reclassified at a higher, maybe we start using that date that it arrived at pay period.
Immediately or effective next pay period?
If it happens a week ago, great, we moved fast. If it happened nine months ago, which should never happen again.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I just, I'm trying to get at, like, we, we need a policy.
Like, it, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be contingent on what our agendas look like and where we can get it, you know, slot it in.
Okay, so we're gonna discuss on it, we'll.
I mean, we just approved the conservation agent from job description change. We didn't make that retroactive, I don't think.
But we moved in a timely manner on that one.
Well, you don't know when it hit HR. You're assuming we moved in a timely.
I mean, every policy has to be enacted at some point.
I'm.
If this is how we want to handle things going forward, I think that's fair, but.
I think to my earlier point, I mean, Jim, Jim evaluated it, spoke with parties, made this recommendation, so that's why I support it.
I gotta look for a motion if we can see where it falls. I don't expect them always to be, I mean, that's just, till we get policies that help us, guide us.
Move the select board vote to regrade the Building Department Office Coordinator Position from Grade Eight to Grade Nine, retroactive to July 1st, 2023.
Second.
It's been moved by Mark, second by Matthew. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm gonna abstain. I'm not really sure that I agree with the retroactive part. I agree with the regrading of the thing. But I, retroactive for nine months is, I mean.
Okay, you want to, you want to abstain?
4-0. Yeah.
4-0, one?
I, I.
No, I, you said it, I get, I understand.
Thank you.
It's one of those things, listening to how that policy hasn't been graded 10 years ago, I don't know.
Mr. Chair, this, the next one is appointment of, we already have appointment, Michelle is our town accountant. This is just the requirement DOR at the board formally appointing for three-year terms.
Yep.
So can I ask, these aren't three-year terms, though?
I know, that's, that's, we can't make, it has to, we want it to be, we put the term in now and then it's, then it's consistent with what we would be doing on our, our regular reappointment basis, which would be consistent with the fiscal year, so this should suffice.
So when do we reappoint them? At the end of these terms or we have always?
Through June 30, 2025, through June 30, 2026, that's, yeah.
July 1st, they'd be new appointments.
Right, so it's, then it's a reappointment with everybody else.
Lines up with fiscal year as the point.
Correct.
That's nice.
Move the select board vote to appoint Town Accountant Michelle Reynolds to a three-year term, retroactive to her initial appointment on May 8th, 2023 through June 30th, 2025 and Assistant Town Account Ashley, how do you pronounce her?
Gueva.
Gueva, to a three-year term, retroactive to her initial hiring appointment on January 11th, 2024 through June 30th, 2026 pursuant to Master Law Chapter 41, Section 49A.
Second.
By Mark, second by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous on that one? We did conservation, we did this, we did that, so we have one more point at this time. Let's do, and I, I want to keep this brief on this, on this part of the meeting for, what do you got? Oh, I didn't see this one.
Yeah, so we already, you already approved of the fire department and then the Tree City USA, so now you're on to Littleton County Gardeners.
Oops, no, I had it backed to my thing. Littleton Country Gardeners, so this is a request to use Littleton Common for their annual plant sale, which they do every year.
Every year there's trouble.
Mother's Day?
Yeah.
It's a rough ground.
Yeah, they're crazy.
So my, no, I don't have a problem with them using it, but is this gonna be a problem with the sewer construction or they're gonna be cleared out?
Great point. Maybe they could use 550 King.
All right, let's, uh.
We can vote to approve it and then we need to move it.
This is their ask to us, so.
They might not know anything about the sewer construction.
Yeah, you know, we should start going to the, to LELWD along with the police and the fire when people request to use the common, just so we know what the schedule might be.
That's a good idea.
Okay, henceforth?
Well, for the next six months.
Yeah, again, they, they came to us, so.
Yeah, it's their.
I'm, I'm not opposed to doing this. I'm just worried that they're gonna think they can use it and then they find out that there's.
Parking and there won't be, yeah.
Generally speaking, they've been trying to, you know, kind of minimize that and then replating it and everything, so I, I wouldn't envision this being.
But there have been a couple of weeks when Rogers Street was closed, so, or I mean Stevens Street.
I think just move to the other part of the common.
All right, use meeting house.
And Ryan, that's, that's, that's not gonna conflict with the graduate, graduate sign on the common?
Uh, I wouldn't think so, no.
Okay.
Yeah, they do this every year, so.
So can, I'm just gonna say, can we vote to let them use the lower or upper common, so if one side's.
That's a good idea.
Whichever side.
So if, if there's something on Stevens Street, they could move across.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, move the select board, approve the use of the lower or upper Littleton Common for the Littleton Country Gardeners Annual Plant Sale on May 11th, 2024 from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, including setup on May 10th, 2024.
Second.
By Mark, second by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, this, this is the one, I wanted this to be a quicker discussion because I, what we're gonna, I wanna vision this. We know what happened last week in accidents, it don't, like, did everybody know the accident, the train?
Yeah.
Yeah, but what was the cause?
The truck leaving because it couldn't make the right turn because it was a vehicle.
Driver.
But that, that's not the reason why I want to bring this up. This is something when I came on the select board, even before that, that I, I wondered why there was a truck exclusion on Taylor Street and I know.
I just, my first or second year on the board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chief Penar.
Matt King was the chief and he was, he said he was gonna address it and just kind of got tabled and tabled.
Pulled up the history. I don't know if we, we got shared, that all got shared by Chief Penar.
So I, I have a suspicion, which is that I have friends who lived in the schoolhouse right next to Patriot and their delivery trucks arrive at like 5:00 to 6:00 AM and Patriot was very respectful, but they're loud and sometimes they had to call the number to say, would you please tell those guys to stop shouting or whatever? So my guess is that there were a lot of large trucks driving down Taylor Street off of Route 2 at 5:00 in the morning.
In the 70s.
Every morning.
Yeah, they have, they have.
Well, it was before Patriot, but yeah.
Right, this would have been very fine when this law.
Okay, sure, so I, the point stands, I think.
I, I just want to, a lot has changed in the town. You know, that street itself, the exclusion only goes to Route 2 and then the trucks can go from there on up to Taylor or to Foster Street. So it's really just this end. The left side of the road almost exclusively is industrial, commercial, almost exclusively. I mean, all the way to one house, I think, that's down there. Then the right side has some commercial industrial as well, so it's not a huge impact. There is a sidewalk that goes all the way down to the quarter, right before Route 2, which I think whether there were trucks on that road or not, we need to put a sidewalk in just to get around towards Porter. But what's happened since the high school has been moved, we are forcing all of those vehicles out on to King Street. And if you ever try to get through there, there's a, there's more trucks trying to get by that high school at that light, not just during highs, you know, the schools when they're coming and going, but just in general. We'll talk about the safety part. It's just a nasty thing that those trucks have to do when they come over the tracks. A lot of cars get confused at those stop signs and they stop, they don't know what to do and then the truck can't swing to go right because it's a vehicle blocking them and they, they get stuck there, you know, for a short amount of time. So there's been a lot of close calls because I've witnessed it, and not just with huge trucks, but with.
Vehicles.
Vehicles, but. So with all that being said, if you took away the safety part of that turn, I just think this should, should have been looked at probably once the high school went in and we, we put that light in, because it's really funneling traffic out there. To me, creates more of a safety hazard, a traffic hazard than these vehicles that could just come right off of Route 2, 495 on the, and come right up Taylor Street and avoid all of those lights. It's a straight shot to where. It's a straight shot to where, and we're not talking about a ton of trucks now. There's plenty of trucks that are gonna be on King coming from Air, Pepsi and everything. This is just specific. The only trucks that I can imagine that would be on that road would be, why else would you be on Taylor? I mean, that's your, that whole lot. Patriot.
If this truck didn't, if this truck could have used Taylor Street to get to Route 2, wouldn't have been taking the left.
Yeah, there's a lot of, so that part of it, but I just think it's worth a discussion. I wanted to at least put it on here so that next meeting, and we will put it out to, you know, the public sees it, our next full meeting probably, it won't be the Tuesday, I'm not gonna fill that one up, but after that, I would like to have it on the agenda for if people want to come and speak to it. I know, you know, this, sometimes they'll rub a neighborhood the wrong way, but we could talk about, if our group wants to put an exclusion, you know, a night exclusion, if you just want to talk about the day, you know, from X to X.
Seven a.m. to six p.m.
Seven a.m. to 6:00 p.m., seven a.m. to 8:00 p.m., whatever. So it's not, there's not trucks. I don't know if there's really truck traffic at 10:00, 11:00, 12:00 one at night at Patriot. I don't think they are pulling in those times at night, we would have heard about that by now, but that's, that's an option. But I, looking at all the paperwork the chief provided us, and Diana, Tom Clark, could just, could see a little bit of the history, just, we've grown out of it, and I think it's become now, it's safer for those trucks to be on Taylor Street than they are on King Street.
You want to bring it back to the April 8th meeting?
So...
Is that what you wanted to do?
Yeah, whatever, yeah. Yeah.
Could we couple it with a discussion about banning engine brake use outside of emergency needs?
Yeah, I heard about this recently. Where was it?
Yeah. So I had a resident come from Powersard who was upset about the amount of engine brakes. He says it starts around 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning.
On Powers?
Ideal block.
From, uh...
He's in that concrete block.
Coming from that concrete place. And there's a lot, very little that can be done about it unless, by, you know, by enforcement, unless there's some sort of black letter law that they can claim as a citation, right? And, you know, you don't want to make folks stand around with a...
Is there necessity why they have to do, I apologize?
No, that's the issue, right? There's no necessity to be using that engine brake on a side street.
Brake.
Yeah, so...
And this is continuous, this happens?
Yeah, it happens a lot. And so I would think that if we're gonna open up truck traffic, it would also make sense to talk about, you know, appropriate use of a jig brake.
So I think we should open this up. I don't think we'll be ready to make a decision at our next meeting necessarily.
Yeah.
I think we should be talking to more, talk to Patriot and figure out how many trucks they think would be using Taylor Street.
No, this is...
Right, and, and we should probably talk about whether we want to lower the speed limit on Taylor Street, for example, too. But in the, you know, there's a lot of things that need to go into this more than just lifting the restriction. I agree, I think we've outgrown that restriction, and there's more, I don't think that, at first, I think that restriction is almost impossible to enforce, because you just say, I'm going to this place or that place, right?
Oh, yeah.
So, but, but I'd like to, you know, a lot of thought went into putting the restriction in, and we should put the same level of thought into removing it, so.
So we can reach out to Patriot.
Mr. Chairman, I'm meeting with, I'm meeting with them at the request of Mark.
Dan Gray?
I am. Dan Gray, Wednesday morning at 10:00 a.m.
Domingo.
Okay, so it's really just, if you'd like to attend our meeting, our next meeting, to just to get an idea.
If Jim can just get the information.
Yeah, or you can get the, yeah, how many vehicles, how many trucks are we talking about? What are your hours that you're moving trucks?
That's the reason.
You know, would they, is it something that they want to see? And it's not just because of what just happened, although that's serious, it could have been a lot worse.
Okay.
But a lot of other reasons that I just explained, I think, as well. And we can talk to them about the brake thing.
I'll reach out to all of you to prepare, so I can prepare properly for what you want asked.
Yeah, okay.
Any requests or anything to Mr. Gray?
So we should talk, you know, maybe at our next meeting, we talk about, like, do we want to figure out how to do a count of trucks or something over a period of time, or just...
Traffic study.
Well, I think just getting it from, we don't need to put markers down, I think we could actually talk to, how many vehicles do you have, how many delivery trucks do you have come here a day? If it's an average, give us the average. And that's, that's the number, because not, you're only gonna have ones and twos after that. Why would you...
Well, I don't know, well, we're assuming that all the truck traffic is Patriot. So what other truck traffic there would be? I think most of it is probably them, but...
I mean, you got the landfill place, but they get to use it anyway, because they have a business.
Well, then people might come Route 2 through to Brew Street and then go...
Brew Street has a truck restriction on it.
Oh, okay.
And Brew Street, there is no way you would lift that truck.
And no truck wants to make the right over the tracks there either, so I think they're gonna be like, I'd rather go to King in that regard, but...
Every once in a while, you see a truck on Brew Street, and yeah.
This is really, it was put into place because of very fine?
But that's, I mean, I was, I was just, I was guessing.
Yeah, so I think...
So I actually did, so I talked to a couple people. One person said that their recollection was that the trucks were coming up off Route 2, Taylor Street, through Brew Street, and it was just too much. Another person told me that there was, there was a housing development going in on Harvard Road, and they were doing basically a gravel removal operation all hours of the day and night, sending truck traffic down Harvard Road and Taylor Street, and that was the cause of a lot of the noise complaints, so.
But without putting a restriction, I mean, that we can't control the Harvard Road, that's...
No, but they're going down Harvard Road, down Taylor Street, so, yeah, so. I think we should figure out what we can do to allow trucks on Taylor Street, but still figure out what we can do to help the residents. I mean, whether that's a nighttime ban in general, or, you know, lowering the speed limit, you know. I think there are more sidewalks planned for Taylor Street as part of the Amazon development